I'd like to call the meeting to order, the Wilmington City Council. I'd like to welcome all those who are with us here this evening and all those watching us home on TV. Thank you for taking an interest in your government. At this time, I would like to introduce Sergeant Ron Evans of the Wilmington Police Department for invocation. If everyone will stand, remain standing afterwards for the Pledge of Allegiance. Sergeant, welcome.
Good evening. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your continued grace and your continued mercy that you bestow upon us day in and day out. Lord, in times of uncertainty, we ask that you continue to hold us in your arms and cradle us, hold us close to your bosom. We thank you for this council and all of the executive members and their staff. Continue to give them wisdom as they prepare to make and continue to make the decisions in this city that will be beneficial to the citizens. We pray this prayer in your son's precious name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have several presentations this evening. Our first presentation, I'd like to recognize James Gregory, who will be recognized in the 2024 as the 500th year anniversary of the discovery of southeastern North Carolina coast by Giovanni de Verrazano. Mr. Gregory?
I wish to introduce Kathleen Vizzetti, who is second-generation Italian-American, and she's really been the pusher behind this proclamation.
Okay, very good. City of Wilmington, North Carolina proclamation reads, whereas March 21st, 2024 is acknowledged as the 500th year anniversary of the maritime explorer Giovanni de Verrazano's landfall on the southeastern coast of North Carolina in the vicinity of Cape Fear, and whereas in 1524 commissioned by King Francis I of France, Giovanni de Verrazano set sail from France in his ship La Daffine in search of a western passage across the Atlantic Ocean to the east coast of Asia. And whereas La Daffine sailed from north from Cape Fear to New York Bay and ended its voyage after resupplying in Newfoundland and returning to debut France on July the 8th, 1524, and whereas Giovanni de Verrazano's landfall on the east coast of the United States expanded maritime knowledge of the coast and sparked future explorations, and whereas Giovanni de Verrazano's letters to King Francis I favorable described the landscape and inhabitants of eastern North Carolina that he and his crew encountered on their voyage, and whereas the significant impact of Giovanni de Verrazano's voyage on the history of the Cape Fear region is acknowledged. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Bill Saffo, Mayor of the city of Wilmington, along with the entire city council, do hereby recognize 2024 as the 500th year anniversary of Giovanni de Verrazano's voyage to the southeastern coast of North Carolina. And I believe you folks shared with me that the first landfall was about there at Currie Beach, is what I believe that he first saw.
His stories aren't sure, but they're in this vicinity.
Well, this historian figured it out, so.
Well, the purpose of this proclamation, of course, is to recognize Verrazano and his explorations that brought him to the coast of North Carolina, the first European explorer to come to North Carolina. And these Italians really wanted him to get that recognition.
Thank you very much. Our next presentation is recognition, recognize the stamp, Defiance Chapter, NSDAR, Regent Lynn Ashcraft, and recognize the American Revolution experience exhibited by the national daughters of the American Revolution.
Good afternoon, Mayor Saffo.
You want to read it?
Oh, I can come up.
Whereas on July 4th, 2026, our nation will commemorate the anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence, and whereas North Carolina's provisional Congress adopted the Halifax Resolves Resolution on April the 12th, 1776, becoming the first formal call for independence from Great Britain among the American colonies during the American Revolution. And whereas the great state of North Carolina was founded by the Revolutionary War generation and their children, when on November the 21st, 1789, it ratified the United States Constitution and became the 12th state of the Union. And whereas the National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution, better known as DAR, is a non-political women's service organization established in 1890, whose members are linearly descended from patriots of the American Revolution. And whereas through the president's general leadership, all daughters are spending the next three years celebrating Stars and Stripes forever and rejoicing in our DAR ties of service and friendship by celebrating our nation's rich history and diversity, promoting belonging through membership and dedicated service to God, home, and country, and by completing projects in unique, local, and impactful ways. And whereas the stamp, Defiance Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution, is proud to sponsor the American Battlefield Trust American Revolution Experience exhibit at the Cape Fear Museum of Science and History from December the 11th through December 29th, 2024. Resolve that I, Mayor Bill Saffo, recommend this commemoration to all our city of Wilmington, North Carolina residents, and I want to thank the DAR for all of your tremendous work year in and year out.
Thank you so much. We are one of 107 chapters and 8,000 members in the DAR in North Carolina, and we're very proud to be the first chapter in North Carolina to be able to sponsor this exhibit and bring it here to Wilmington. So you're all invited to come, and our opening day is December 11th at 11 o'clock, and you're invited to come to that as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you. This time, I'd like to recognize Kenneth Waltrip, who's the Executive Director of the Cape Fear Public Utilities, and make a presentation of CFPUA Annual Report. Kenneth, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that recognition, and thank you for the invitation to speak before you. I will note that we have brought copies of our latest annual report, and as you may recall, CFPUA's bylaws require an annual meeting in November where the executive director presents this annual report to our board and thereafter presents it to our sponsoring governmental entities, the city of Wilmington and New Hanover County. This is that report. Now, I'm very pleased to announce that the condition of your authority remains strong and financially sound. This year, we can highlight a few milestones that indicate progress on CFPUA's strategic plan, and you will hear a word in my report that reoccurs a lot, and that word is historic. This year, we adopted a historic $120 million budget designed to foster orderly growth and retain essential services. We saw the initiation of historic galvanized service line replacement project mostly funded by grants. We continue historic investments in our community, and we initiated the first utility consolidation with another entity since CFPUA was initially formed by the city of Wilmington and New Hanover County. We end this calendar year with national awards recognizing our utility for its wastewater treatment plant compliance, for watershed protection, and in North Carolina First for water treatment research. In 2024, we reorganized and folded CFPUA's customer service department into our finance department, seeking greater organizational efficiency while providing the same quality service to our customers. We initiated new technologies and new training to improve the customer service experience, and we're nearing completion of renovations of our headquarters building at 235 Government Center Drive. Your water and wastewater utility continues to grow, with 1,213 meters installed and $11,169,000 in conveyed infrastructure assessed to us over the last 10 months of this calendar year. And despite a rate increase necessitated by inflationary pressures and the cost associated with replacing the South Side wastewater treatment plant, our water and wastewater services are still the most affordable in the region, with an average amount of customer income spent on water and wastewater service with our authority below that of Brunswick County, Fayetteville, and Pender County. Our system development charges remain some of the lowest in the region, demonstrating our commitment to the economic vitality of our city and our community. Now, this year, we quantified the economic impact of your authority on the local economy, and we were confirming the wisdom of our board's investment in infrastructure for the good of current and future generations. Key findings from that economic impact study suggest that every million dollars spent by CFPUA creates 10.7 jobs per year in New Hanover County, and that our spending supported over 1,000 jobs on average, directly and indirectly, and that each dollar invested generated $1.66 in economic output. The report also notes that the loss of our services could cost our regional economy anywhere from $70 to $93 million a year, a day. That last statistic is especially sobering, and it reaffirms the importance of vigilance and proactive maintenance and the management of our critical water and wastewater systems, as our neighbors in western North Carolina can sadly attest. Now, key to our vision of serving future generations is the replacement of the South Side wastewater treatment plant. Originally opened 52 years ago, this community asset stands ready for total replacement. Our board has begun the necessary work to provide for the next 50 years through the award of a $13.1 million contract to cover Phase 1 of a progressive design-build project. In October of this year, that design-build team completed the project's 30% design package with updated cost ranges. CFPUA staff are now evaluating that report, which contain unexpected cost increases, and we are reimagining the project through a validation and value engineering process. But our end goals remain unchanged, the replacement of an existing facility and the addition of a additional capacity to support orderly growth. We will achieve that goal. Site work is expected to begin in 2025. Now, consolidations of local government entities or services is often difficult and labor-intensive. Such consolidations are not to be taken lightly, but when done right, bring value to all involved for decades to come. I am pleased to report to you that our authority completed a historic agreement with the town of Wrightsville Beach that meets the needs of our new partners and ensures the cost of the consolidation would not be borne by our existing customers. In a show of support for utility consolidation statewide, our delegation to the North Carolina General Assembly secured historic funding to support that consolidation, and we are deeply grateful to our delegation for that support. In October, our galvanized service line replacement team successfully met the regulatory deadlines for compliance with the revised and improved lead and copper rule, providing our customers with ready access to information about 592 galvanized service lines discovered in our distribution system. We hosted a presidential visit highlighting our nation-leading work, and we received $9.16 million in the bipartisan infrastructure law, of which 8.4 is principal forgiveness or grant. So eight out of nine dollars, it's grant funding, and most of that is being spent within the city of Wilmington. So we're going to be using that to replace aging infrastructure and provide better water pressure to a number of our customers. Now, as we remind ourselves every day, infrastructure management is a key function of any utility, and as good stewards of that infrastructure, we have projects that span the full spectrum of potential activities in the water sector, from major investments in city or county-specific projects to difficult and costly water and sanitary sewer replacements. Our focus is on the future by renewing the infrastructure gifts from community leaders of the past. As a special-purpose unit of local government, we also honor the public trust to hold ourselves to the highest fiduciary standards. As verified in our latest annual comprehensive financial report and audit presented to our board, your authority is healthy and well-managed, with revenues to cover expenditures as well as fund a robust and growing capital improvement program. Our board has taken prudent measures to ensure our financial needs are met through well-thought-out financial policies and community investments. And I'd like to take a moment to thank the council for the service of our two board members that are here today, Councilman Waddell and Councilman Ridenbark. So on behalf of CFPUA's customers, staff, and stakeholders, I thank you for your support and stand ready for any questions.
Any questions for Kenneth? You all have done a phenomenal job there. Just one question, I think this is just more informational, just for the community to know what this authority has done in combating PFAS and the amount of money that our ratepayers have paid and how fast you folks were able to put that system in place to protect the drinking water for this community. Could you share that with us, please?
Yes, and there's community leaders that are on the dais today who made very difficult decisions in 2017 to step forward when there was no guidance from the state, no guidance from the federal government, and to address a problem discovered. That was the removal of PFOS, perinophluorocal substances, first recognized with a signature chemical called Gen-X. This community spent $50 million on infrastructure and more, counting, on litigation to hold the polluter accountable. But in October of 2022, we were one of the first communities and one of the few in the nation who could say that we were PFOS-free, and we are now a destination location for over 6,000 of our fellow utilities nationwide who are coming and flying in to ILM to see this new technology, where at least 6,000 need to implement similar technology, maybe as many as 16,000. So we are leading the nation in solving this problem.
We appreciate all your hard work and effort. I know that this is a concern that this community's had for many years and will continue to have, and hopefully we will finally get those folks into a courtroom and get them to pay what they should pay in the damages that they have done to this area and to this region.
We will continue to pursue them until our customers receive restitution, either voluntarily or in the court of law.
Appreciate it. Anybody else? Thank you, Ken. We have another question here, too.
I noticed, I noticed in your report, you mentioned the loss of, like, if we were out of water, it would be like $70 million a day.
Yes, sir.
Right? And then you also talked a little bit about unexpected cost increases. How are you making sure that you have the resources that you'll need when you're building these projects? Because every year, you know, you're delayed, the cost continues to go up. What are your plans?
Well, as we discovered through our economic impact study, if we lost all ability to provide water, which would be catastrophic.
Right.
The potential economic impact to the entire region, the three-county region, was at least $70 million a day and probably closer to $90 or $100 million. We initiated that study in part because we had a momentary moment of crisis where we had our primary water, raw water line catastrophically fail. Fortunately, we invested time to repair that, that was about a $2.3 million repair. But more importantly, again, leaders in the community and on the dais stepped forward and worked with our local delegation, and we proposed a $60 to $66 million project, and the local delegation to the General Assembly brought $53.5 million to solve that problem. So we have certainly leveraged our relationship with our parent, the city of Wilmington and New Hanover County, to work together to lobby on behalf of the region, and that has paid off. But yes, costs continue to rise, and all we can say is prudent planning. We plan in not years, but in decades. We need to be good stewards of everything that is given to us, including every dollar that somebody pays in, and we need to make sure every project that we put in the ground is absolutely necessary and that we get it for the best possible cost. That is just good business practice. And I'm thankful that I have a board that thinks in those timeframes. They think years ahead, and we're planning a five- and 10-year cycle to get our infrastructure replaced.
Awesome. Okay, thank you. And Mr. Waddell?
I just want to echo the mayor's comments, how grateful we are to CFPUA and how serving on that board, seeing it, you know, almost every day. I'm always amazed at the professionalism and the, just the general tenor from the guys working out in the field, guys and girls working out in the field, all the way up to the executive director. We're lucky to have you at the helm. I feel better having you at the helm. And our community is certainly better for it. So I enjoy working with everybody on that board and the staff members, and just continue to be amazed at what you guys get accomplished every day. So thank you.
Thank you, and I'd like to say that we are successful because we're standing on the shoulders of very strong leadership with the city who are constantly at our back supporting us. So we couldn't be successful without the folks that are right across my shoulder here.
Kenneth, on a personal note, I just want to say thank you for your service to the state and to the folks in the western part of the state. I don't know if, a lot of people may not be aware of this, but Kenneth is part of a lead team that in the aftermath of Hurricane Helene devastated the western part of the state. But literally, we have people up there today that have no water, no sewer, significant portions of Asheville and the surrounding region, and his team has been up there working with those folks, working with the state, working with the federal government to bring water and sewer back to the western part of the state. This is not an easy job, and I've said it, this is the largest devastation that this state has ever seen, $53 billion. And they were one of the lead teams up there in the aftermath of this, and I know they are continuing to work to help those folks, and I just want to say thank you. I know that we have some of the mayors that are coming here tomorrow that'll be talking to us about some of the issues that they're facing there, but I really appreciate all of your work in leading that team for the state of North Carolina.
Thank you, sir. Again, we stand on the shoulders of really strong staff who have responded to multiple hurricanes, so we know how to respond to emergency, and we help our neighbors.
Thank you. Mr. Ridenbark?
If everybody else is going to talk, I want to get my two cents worth in. I've been on that board since 2010, and there were many, many times where we were having sanitary sewer overflow, SSOs, before the authority was formed, and I can assure everybody that that's almost, that we just don't even have them anymore. It's very rare, and to see the progress that the Cape Fear Public Utility Authority has made through many rough times, and to see our staff at 4:00 in the morning on a cold winter night out there taking care of problems and getting them done before most people wake up to go to work or go to school, it's, everybody needs to know those things. And our Sweaty, Sweeney Treatment Plant, anybody that wants to see something that's, I don't know how we did it, it was like building a ship inside of a bottle, but you arrange a tour and go through and see what that looks like. The mayor and I were in Toronto a couple of years ago at a big conference about this very thing, and people would see my lanyard that said Cape Fear Public Utility Authority, and they knew all about us everywhere I went. I mean, we're on the map, so we've done a great job, and I'll say it starts at the top. Got great people over there, great staff, and proud to be a part of it. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Kenneth. Our next order of business is our Consent Agenda, items 1 through 11. Are there any items that any council member would like to hear separately? I would like to pull item C11.
C6.
C6. Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion to approve by Mayor Pro Tim Barnett, seconded by Councilmember Ridenbark. Discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Item passes unanimously. At this time, I'd like to pass it over to Councilmember Waddell.
Yeah, I mean, this is probably would have been a better discussion to have at the agenda briefing, but I didn't think about it until earlier this afternoon. Just out of curiosity, the 22 pursuit-rated Tahos that are being acquired, are they replacing, like, existing SUVs? Or is this part of this? Because I know we're phasing out a lot of the, like, Chargers, the cars. Is that what this is a continuation of?
That's correct, yes.
So is it 22 in, 22 out?
22 in, 22 out, yes. We're not adding.
All cars are being replaced with SUVs?
That's correct.
Okay.
Just for your information, we're replacing them not only with SUVs, but with pickup trucks as well. John has been diligent in searching high and low, excuse me, throughout southeastern United States looking for vehicles, because we are going to be behind on that replacement schedule with Dodge getting out of the manufacturing business. So there are, there is somewhat of a scramble for municipalities and sheriff's departments looking for vehicles, and so we are replacing them with a monastery of different types, but you will see pickup trucks and SUVs predominantly.
So other municipalities that you all speak to, are they, nobody's buying cars anymore? I mean, they're just out?
There's no pursuit.
This is more my curiosity than anything.
For pursuit-rated vehicles, there's only two types of pickup trucks and three SUVs that I'm aware of. No cars that are available for us to replace with.
Crown Vic needs to come back in business, I was like.
They're testing them in California, as far as I know right now, so.
Okay, all right. Thank you, appreciate it.
Somebody would make a lot of money if they did a pursuit-rated car.
Thank you.
Do you want to go ahead and make a motion to pass item C6? Okay, we have a motion to approve from Councilmember Waddell, seconded by Councilmember Ridenbark. Discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. That brings us to item C11, which is the resolution authorizing the retirement of our police mount Elton and authorizing transfer of the police mount Elton to police officer Elijah Baker. This horse has been with us, I would like to bring the horse in here, but I don't think we should, but I'm going to turn it over to Captain Williams, who's got a little presentation about this horse has been with us for 20-some years now, I believe.
Yes, my name's Captain Williams from the police department. We're here in consideration of retiring police mount Elton. Elton started with us in 2008, and ironically enough, I was his first partner. I was the first person to ever ride him in that program. He's had several other partners since then and done a lot of good for this community and really been a rock for us. We have prepared a video to show since he could not be here. He was out front when you guys came in, but the weather was a little bit cold, so I don't know that everyone got to see him, so we have a video we'd like to present in honor of him.
Okay, thank you. Dylan?
Elton started with the department in 2009. That was actually right about the same time I got transferred to Mount, and so I was new to the unit, and he was my first horse, so I guess. So I guess we learned everything together. So he's been, you know, very reliable for that many years. He's had several different people ride him, but I rode him for about five years, and we had a really good relationship, and he was a good partner. Elton and I had a very special relationship. Jason used to get mad because I could go outside and yell for him to come across the pasture, and he'd come running, and his horse would have to, wouldn't, and he'd have to walk all the way across the pasture and get him. So I used to say it's because my horse was trained better. Not sure if that was really it, but it's a memory that I'll always have from the unit.
He really has had a long career. We've utilized him for training new horses. We've used him in DC, up in Washington DC, for National Police Week, some of the ceremonies there. He's really just been one of our most dependable horses who can really do anything we ask of him with ease. So he makes us look good. So yeah, he's just really been a great horse. Now, they're rare, and so that's one reason why we've had him around so long, is just because he's been such an asset for the unit.
One of the most memorable things that happened when we were together was, he's, actually, Elton's been hit by a car twice. So two different occasions, he got hit by a car. One time when I was riding him, his nose got hit when we were standing perpendicular to the road, and then a few years later, he got hit a second time. So he's kind of, I want to say famous for that. Both times, luckily, he was okay. Didn't even actually much move when he got hit the time that I was on him, which goes back to what Officer Watts said about him being dependable. You know, he's kind of ready for everything and just took it in stride. So we'll miss having him around and have that part of him that, you know, the new horses will have to learn and try to follow in his footsteps.
And also to elaborate on that, the support from the community when, when that happened was really, it was just insane how much support, how many people came out, emailed, text messages, calls, flag us down. I mean, it, you know, for probably a year after that, there wasn't a time where we weren't riding him, but somebody would come up and ask, you know, how's he doing? So, you know, the community really supports these horses and did, and, you know, the proof, the proof was there with that. They really came out and wished him well. Elton is going to retire with Officer Baker and his family, so he'll have plenty of days just to chill out and be a horse and, and I think he's moving up to Fayetteville area?
Yep.
So, so yeah, I mean, he's going to stay close to home and hopefully, you know, live the rest of his years there.
Good job. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I will make that motion to approve item C-11, second by Councilmember Ridenberg. Any further discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. That brings us to our next item of business, which is our public information. We have six speakers that have signed up to speak to us. I'm sorry, five speakers that have speak, I'm going to, two, three, four, five, six speakers, I'm sorry, that have signed up to speak with us this evening. Each speaker will be allotted five minutes. The city clerk will keep the time clock, and you will hear a buzzer go off, and that means your time is up. Our first speaker that has signed up to speak this evening is Mr. Matt Golden, will be speaking to us about a music festival for June 21st, 2025. Mr. Golden? Mr. Golden here. Okay. Next speaker is Ms. Hyba Yunus. My grandfather was a terrorist. Ms. Yunus here? Come on.
Here we are again. My grandfather was a terrorist. He tended to his field, watered the roses in the courtyard, smoked cigarettes with grandmother on the yellow beach, lying there like a prayer rug. My grandfather was a terrorist. He picked oranges and lemons, went fishing with brothers until noon, sang a comforting song in route to the ferriers with his bigh-balled horse. My grandfather was a terrorist. He made a cup of tea with milk, sat on his verdant land as soft as silk. My grandfather was a terrorist. He departed his house, leaving it for the coming guests, left some water on the table, his best, lest the guests die of thirst after their conquest. My grandfather was a terrorist. He walked to the closest safe town, empty as the silent sky, vacant as a deserted tent, dark as a starless night. My grandfather was a terrorist. My grandfather was a man, a breadwinner for ten, whose luxury was to have a tent with a blue United Nations flag set on the rusting pole on the beach next to a cemetery. This poem is by Mushab Abu Toha. Mushab Abu Toha is a Palestinian poet born just thirty-two years ago in Al-Shati Refugee Camp in Gaza. His family became refugees in Gaza after Zionist gangs terrorized them out of their home city of Jaffa in 1948 in the name of ethnically cleansing Palestine from its indigenous non-Jewish population, including my family. I invite you to question your indoctrination into the definition of the word terrorist. What, or better yet, who do you think of when you think of a terrorist? If I hold up this picture, who's the terrorist? In this picture, is the person driving the tank not a terrorist? Why have I never heard to them referred to as such by mainstream media, Americans or Westerners? How, under what moral code, are they magically exempt? Noam Chomsky provides an answer to that question in an interview about terrorism in the Middle East. Hopefully by now we know what this is about. We've been here every city council meeting. Noam Chomsky says that the term terrorism is used by the great powers, namely the US, Israel, and their allies in this case, simply to refer to forms of violence of which they disapprove. So the US was, of course, supporting the violent Israeli invasions and occupation of southern Lebanon. Hezbollah was instrumental in driving them out. So for that reason, they're a terrorist organization. And it's a reflection of the power of the imperial states, the United States and Europe, that they're able to shift the framework such that the problem appears to be Hamas' policies and not the more extreme policies of the US and Israel. And we must remember that in their case, it's not just words, it's actions. They are annihilating us. End quote. And we, in Wilmington, with almost two million dollars a year for over a decade dedicated to Israel's military as part of the package, the federal package deal, we are complicit in these actions of terror committed against Palestinian people, Lebanese people, and other vulnerable people of the world, including within the United States. The first presentation today was about the water supply and how, and part of it was about how much that cost. What could we be doing with two million dollars a year besides killing my family? What? Just last week, even former Israeli occupation minister Moshe Yalon, himself complicit in the murder and illegal imprisonment of tens of thousands of Palestinian civilians, accused Israel of committing war crimes and ethnic cleansing in the Gaza Strip. It is that bad. It is that bad. The United States of America and Israel have been committing war crimes in Gaza with impunity for four hundred and twenty-three days today. Almost two million people have been rendered homeless indefinitely, two hundred thousand murdered, and hundreds of thousands more maimed, injured, orphaned, and otherwise robbed of life. The same mouths touting law and order have also touted proud defiance of legal orders from the International Criminal Court, the International Court of Justice, along with various UN resolutions. All in the news this week. As a direct result, the US has become an unrespectable pariah in this interconnected world we live in, making all Americans unsafe and vulnerable to hate crimes around the world and at home. There is so much more I could say, but detention in Palestine is here. It is relevant, it's us. We have been here for fourteen months. We have had made forty-three public comments at nineteen city council meetings. Who are you guys working for? Because it's certainly not us. Speak up. Represent.
Next speaker is Mr. Mahmoud Al-Azizi. Will be speaking to us about Palestine, Gaza.
Good evening. My name is Mahmoud Al-Azizi. I am from Palestine, Gaza. I'm a student at the University of North Carolina Wilmington. I study English and Culture Studies in my senior year. And I came to the United States in August 2023 before, as part of an exchange program where I was supposed to go back to my home city, Gaza, in December 2023. And due to the war, my scholarship extended, and I am here now studying. Ladies and gentlemen, when I first came to this room, I couldn't help but notice how beautiful it is. It is very neat. The curtains are beautiful, and everything is comfy, the light is beautiful. I couldn't help but notice the curtains as well. It looks exactly like the curtains of my room back in Gaza. Like, the only difference is that my, my curtains back in Gaza are bombed. They are not there anymore. It was bombed, along with my house, along with my father's car that he saved for, for ten years, along with our family business. It was bombed, along with my grandmother's yard that me and my cousin used to play in and pick olives in the harvesting season. My cousin's name is Shadi. He was a graduate student with honor from the Islamic University of Gaza, and his dream was to have a family and take care of his family in the Gaza Strip. And November 2023, he was killed by Israeli airstrikes. May God have mercy in his soul. My curtains were bombed along with the street where I grew up in. Along with the street I've known my whole life playing football and playing games with other children in. My street was bombed, as so, as long as, as well as the hospital, as well as the school I attended, as well as my university back home. Everything I've ever known was bombed by Israeli airstrikes. I have three brothers and three sisters. They are all with families, except my younger brother, Ahmed. My family evacuated my house only twenty days before it was bombed, and they had to witness the terror of moving and evacuating to the south of Gaza, as they had to go through checkpoints where they had to raise their hands and witness people being detained and literally being shot for reasons such as bending or falling down. I thank God every day that my family made it alive to the south of Gaza. And right now, they are all in tents. The situations there are beyond terrible. My family and a lot of families are dying from cold, from hunger, from starvation. They are suffering. The last time my parents slept on a bed was a year ago. They worked their whole life just to be rewarded by this, to sleep on a tent. It was very cold here in Wilmington the last couple of days. I was freezing going from one class to another, and I couldn't help but think of my family. The last call with my bigger brother, he told me his tent fell on them in the middle of the night, and his five-year-old was crying on the street from cold. We don't deserve this. My people don't deserve this. My family don't deserve this. We are people like anybody else in the world, and we deserve equal rights. I can tell and continue my story for a lot of time, but I'm only given five minutes to speak and to express that my family is under genocide, they are under ethnical cleansing, and they are dying, and they could die any moment, because literally, the only barrier between them and death is the time that takes the Israeli if missile to fall on their tent. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ms. Trish Wu. Will be speaking to us about developments both in process and approved impacting residents of southeast Wilmington, specifically Independence Boulevard and River Road.
Council members and mayor, thank you for your time this evening. I, my road group team members, and other allies are here this evening to request that you consider placing a pause and/or moratorium on future development along the Independence Boulevard, River Road, and Cali, Carolina Beach Road traffic corridor. It is imperative that the Planning Commission and Town Council formulate a more permanent development strategy regarding the planning and installation of infrastructure that can support traffic generated from current and future development and the preservation of much-needed green space. Consideration might be given to General Statute 160D-107, which allows for temporary moratoria on some development so that the city is able to consider the many traffic, safety, and capacity needs of the area, and how best to satisfy the needs of the community as a whole. We want to stress the importance of safety of your citizens, growth for our children, and protection of the small amount of green space that remains as follows. Added traffic will create substantially more congestion and pose a significant threat to the health and safety of our children and neighbors. Our streets are not designed to safely handle and manage such a dramatic increase in traffic. Our existing infrastructure is already overwhelmed. Will a significant accident have to happen before you take notice? Public school capacity is not in place. As a coastal community, vulnerable to severe weather, including major hurricanes, we're particularly worried about timely access to evacuation routes. As taken from the Wilmington Current Public Information Report, Fall 2024, for more than twenty-five years, city council has prioritized flood and stormwater resilience through enhancements that protect the city's drainage systems. We ask that you prioritize protection of natural areas in southern Wilmington, which are the best pervious surfaces, will best reduce floodwater impacts, and reduce stormwater mitigation requirements. Stop loss of biodiversity due to overdevelopment. Protect our wildlife habitats. Leave green space for the future. Create a forever use of property by preserving our beautiful community for future generations. Stop oversaturation of rental units and other development concerns. To the best of our knowledge, the following are infrastructure projects in process or discussed, but no dates scheduled. A traffic circle at River Road and Independence Boulevard, and Independence Boulevard to be converted to four lanes of traffic in its entirety from River Road to Carolina Beach Road. No dates have been scheduled, perhaps in the next three to ten years. The following is a list of approved projects both to be built and in process that will impact this traffic corridor. Five hundred and seventy rental unit development across from the point at Barclay, 3152 South Seventeenth Street. Two hundred and fifty-seven rental unit development, 3818 Carolina Beach Road and 3930 Independence Boulevard, across from Harris Teeter. Two hundred and fifty rental unit development, Waterford, Old Marina, at Independence Boulevard and River Road. Two hundred and twenty-five rental unit development, 3903 to 3915 Carolina Beach Road, across from Harris Teeter. Plus a thousand eighty-nine additional doors at Riverlight, scheduled to come on board. A project that was withdrawn at the November thirteenth- A project that was withdrawn at the November 13, 2024 Planning Commission meeting would have added 538 rental units at Independence Boulevard and Eco Farms Boulevard. This property is currently owned by the county and the heirs of Flossy Byron. This area is most importantly, the headwater area to Bernard's Creek. A large number of structures with impervious pavement will lead to further water quality decline there. Of note, Dane Scalise County Commissioner has advocated for consideration of this property as a possible Airly Gardens 2.0. According to an October report by real estate and investment firm CBRE, Wilmington's current vacancy rate of 13.1% is above the market's historical average of 8.3%. We believe it is time to place a pause and a moratorium on rezoning and its impact on south Wilmington, as well as leaving green space to be a forever use of property versus one and done. The real estate boom will not last forever. When is enough enough? South Wilmington deserves your time, consideration, and commitment to our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ms. Robin Morgan, Saving Sledge Forest. Is Ms. Morgan here? Is Ms. Morgan here? Sledge Forest? Our last speaker this evening is Mr. William Craig, who will be speaking to us about the Wilmington Police Department. Mr. Craig here.
Good evening. Billy Craig here. How you doing? Sorry? Is that better? Okay. Billy Craig here, born and raised in Wilmington, Wilmingtonan, retired police officer, 30 years, retired last year. You know, I'm a local, enjoy the camaraderie of these men and women that are standing back here with the guns and badges on. You know, I remember the good times and bad times. I also remember the long nights that we would stay up trying to figure out who killed somebody. Still, I enjoyed it. Why? I don't know. I'm a little nutty, I guess. So, early in my career, I worked every serving warrants. I made an estimated 4,000 arrests in three years. Never had to shoot anybody, never had to grab anybody. Well, I had to grab people, but never really had to do anything crazy. Thank goodness. I thank the Lord for that. I've investigated violent crimes, some of the worst things you'd ever see, children dead, shot, killed, mothers, fathers killed. I still remember all the faces every time I had to tell somebody a bad thing. My last 15 years, I was on loan from the Wilmington Police Department to the FBI, working international and domestic terrorism matters. And I worked a lot of state and local federal law matters as well. And I take great pleasure in engaging people wherever I go, trying to put a smile on somebody's face, making sure that folks receive respect. I've carried this before, during, and after my career as a police officer. And my family actually finds it rather annoying when we go out, you know. Sorry, guys. Yeah, they're back there. So, I still enjoy running into officers, shaking hands, telling them to be safe, telling them to be safe. That statement takes an entirely different role now. I cannot in good conscience stand and listen to what's been going on in the media, been going on within the department. I can't stand the way the head of an agency in uniform while on duty stood in front of a camera and started talking about systemic racism within the department. If there is systemic racism within that department, ladies and gentlemen, let's clean house. I don't know any other way to say it. You know, there are plenty of publications out there that talks about how leaders should act, what they should do, you know. Hell, even the BLET program right now, they are really, excuse me, hell-bent on making sure that new officers understand the fact of, like, ABLE. You know, bystandership for law enforcement. If they see something happen, they're supposed to step up. But if you have a leader who's standing there and saying there's systemic racism, let's get it out there. You know, unfortunately, what occurred is Mike Fanta retired and he sat in front of HR and said, hey, look, here's his complaint. They took his complaint, or so he thought, until 30 days later when he checks in with them and they're like, what complaint are you talking about? Unfortunately, stuff like that has happened before. Well, Mike was able to tell them that I can prove to you, I gave it to you. So, then here we go. Said he had to step in and hire an outside agency, a third-party agency, to come in and investigate the matter, a substantiated matter, substantiated. You know, I would've sat down with Chief Williams the day I retired. That was June 2, 2023. We sat and had breakfast at the Chick-fil-A at 5106 South College Road down in Monkey Junction. We had a good conversation. During our conversation, he made a comment to me that made me really think about what he was doing and how he's doing it. He said he emulated a gentleman who was a fire chief. And I believe, Mr. Safi, you might have been on council at the time, but it was John Cease. John Cease was fired as a Wilmington Police Chief. And Chief Williams looked at me and said, you know who I emulate, what chief I emulate? And I'm thinking, thinking he's going to say Ralph Evangelos, Ricky Simpson. He goes, John Cease. And I sat there, in the back of my head, I'm going, have you lost your mind? Because that was John Cease. And unfortunately, it appears that the substantiated claim or substantiated report against Chief Williams has caused him a lot of problems. And, you know, I helped pay for it. I'm born and raised here. I lived in the city. I have lived in the city during my career because I wanted to serve the city I work for. But there's probably only two months I did not live in the city. So, what I'm asking council is, and everybody behind me, you know, I don't care what people think of me. That report needs to be released. If it shows bad things against some police officers, racial things, hey, clean house. I'll step right up there and I'll say, I'll fire myself if I could. I don't put up with it. Can't stand it. But if it's showing some issues with the top, that needs to be addressed and the citizens of Wilmington need to understand that that police department works for them. So, I'm only here just to say, please, consider it. Let's get it done. Let's get it out there. Because you're not going to be able to retain any more officers. And you can dank along the new vehicles you want in front of them and all the new equipment. And when they come in, these new officers come in, they look like, oh, great. And the next thing you know is like, I don't think I want to work here anymore because of the toxic work environment. So, I hope you all have a good evening. Thank you for giving me the extra minute and four seconds.
Thank you, sir. Next item of business is our public hearings. Item PH1 is a resolution in support of naming the Military Cutoff Bridge over Market Street, the Cornelius E. Nixon Bridge. At this time, I'd like to recognize the city manager, Mr. Cottle. Mr. Cottle?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. Linda Painter, our planning director, will overview this item for us.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of council. I'm very pleased to be here this evening to present this item to you. As was mentioned just in the reading of the item, this is a request for the city's support for naming the Military Cutoff Bridge over Market Street in honor of Cornelius E. Nixon. This is an NC DOT facility, so officially, they will have to approve the name change. But one of the requirements for that is that all jurisdictions submit a unanimous letter or a resolution adopted unanimously in support of the proposed name change. Cornelius Sonny, the Oyster Man Nixon, was a lifelong Wilmingtonan who made significant contributions to the community in the areas of entrepreneurship, environmental protection, and professional development for underrepresented populations of students. Mr. Nixon began working in the oyster business as a child to help support his family at a time when African-Americans faced economic difficulties and few opportunities. Mr. Nixon's drive and ambition led him to start the county's first oyster shucking facility on Greenville Sound before purchasing a 10-acre parcel of land on Market Street near Military Cutoff in the 1940s to open an oyster shucking house. He built his business into Nixon's oyster plant, which served the community for over 55 years until his passing in 2011. His property was ultimately purchased to facilitate the construction of the Military Cutoff Overpass, thus the request to name the bridge in his honor. Mr. Nixon was more than just an oyster man. He was a leading entrepreneur in Wilmington, providing jobs to area residents and retirement benefits to his workers, a benefit rarely provided by small business owners. He contributed to the long-term health of the oyster industry and coastal waters by promoting the state's oyster shell recycling program, where customers drop off shells and the Division of Marine Fisheries returns the shells to area waters to provide a habitat for young oysters. As the third-largest recycling center in North Carolina, Mr. Nixon was recognized for his efforts by Marine Fisheries in 2010. Mr. Nixon was also recognized for his legacy of entrepreneurship and community service when Cape Fear Community College renamed its minority male mentoring program to the Nixon Minority Male Leaders Program in 2015. The program has since expanded and is now known as the Nixon Leaders Center, focused on supporting the educational and professional aspirations of underrepresented populations of students. Mr. Nixon demonstrated a commitment to the betterment of Wilmington and New Hanover County throughout his life and create a legacy that lives on today. And for that reason, we are asking that you support the resolution to name the overpass in his honor. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. I will note, the naming committee did unanimously support this at their November meeting.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Thank you, ma'am. I'm going to open up the public hearing and ask if anyone in the public wishes to speak on item PH1, if they'll come forward and state their name for the record and have your piece. Seeing, Madam Clerk, have you received any additional comments?
No, sir, I have not.
Okay. All right. I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for the wishes of council in respect to the item. We have a motion to approve by Mayor Pro Tem Barnett, seconded by Councilman Ravenbar. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Item passes unanimously. Congratulations. Our next item of business, which is item PH2, which is an ordinance to extend the corporate limits of the city of Wilmington, North Carolina. At this time, I'd like to recognize our city manager, Mr. Cottle. Mr. Cottle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brian Chambers, our assistant planning director, will overview this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. The request for annexation includes approximately 19.2 acres located off Alexander Road in northern part of the county. The site is approximately 1.53 miles from the primary corporate limits. And the proposed development program for this site includes 253 residential units. This is the updated timeline. If the annexation is approved, the public hearing to establish zoning for this site will be January 7 of next year. The site currently includes 10 mobile homes and two single-dwelling homes. The site is surrounded by R15 zoning and adjacent uses include single dwellings, mobile homes, a religious institution, and vacant land. Here are several photos of these existing conditions. And here's photos of adjacent properties. The city's annexation policy includes six criteria for evaluation, which cover the minimum statutory requirements, boundaries, land use and zoning, impacts on the city's services, capacity of infrastructure, and then exceptions that council has. For the minimum statutory requirements, a resolution was passed that certified the sufficiency of the petition, which certified that the request does meet all the statutory requirements for a non-contiguous annexation. For the boundaries, when an annexation joins a water body, that water body needs to be included. That would not be applicable in this situation because there are no adjoining water bodies. For land use and zoning, the petition must include a conditional district, rezoning request, or a development agreement. The projected population must be at least 2.3 persons per acre, and there must not be a denial of a special use permit or upzoning from the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners within the past six months. This request does meet all of those standards. Impact on city services, the cost of extending services should not substantially outweigh the economic benefits to the city, and the extension of services should not have a substantial negative impact on the provision of services elsewhere in the city. Staff from multiple departments have evaluated the petition and no impacts on services are anticipated, and finance reports positive net revenues. For capacity of infrastructure, proposed development program shall have appropriate water and sewer services and street access. Staff would point out the site does not currently have access to sewer service. A main extension and pump station upgrade will be required by the development. And staff points out the site has access to a local residential street. Staff believes that a collector or art dealer street would be more appropriate for the access for the proposed development program. The city may elect to offset costs of some of the infrastructure. There is no city participation anticipated, and development must be in compliance with the criteria to support rezoning on overcapacity roads. Again, this is not applicable because Alexander Road is not currently operating above its design capacity. For the exceptions, except for the statutory requirements, all of these criteria that I've reviewed may be weighed by council under the conditions on your screen. A petitioner would experience a significant non-financial hardship if the annexation were not approved or under the facts petition to city's interest are better served by waiving or varying one or more of these criteria. Based on the findings presented in the report and the adopted annexation policy, staff recommends denial of this annexation petition. Per the annexation policy, if this petition is approved, the effective date would be January 1 of next year. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Sir, Ms. Ryan Murray?
So, Brian, the denial is based pretty much on the collector road issue?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything else?
We were just pointing out that it doesn't currently have sewer. They would have to invest in it.
I understand that. Yeah. I mean, that's between them and CFP.
It's the capacity of that road and the intensity of the development. We think it's, we believe it's a little bit too much for a local street.
Okay. And that level of service, right now, Alexander Road is below the, how should I say it? It's operating at a less-than-capacity?
It is operating at a level of service, A, has extremely low traffic volume. This would more than double the traffic volume on that street.
What would that cause it to become? Would it be with 253 units, sir? What would that do to that level of service?
I don't know off the top of my head. It's associated with the rezoning that would come later. It would be, I believe there's the capacity of that road. It's at an A, so it's about 800 trips along with that road right now, and this would add about 1,200 to that road.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is the applicant here? I'll recognize the applicant.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and City Council. My name's Amy Schaefer. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, HH Hunt. I also have with me our development team to answer any particular technical questions that you may have about the project. HH Hunt is a family-owned company that provides quality housing throughout the southeast. All of the, and I want to point out that all of the photos that you're going to see in the presentation tonight are actually projects that HH Hunt already has. So, they are showing you the quality of product that they provide to the area. Again, Mr. Chambers went through where this is located, and you can kind of see Alexander Road has two connections to Military Cutoff. It's kind of a horseshoe-shaped road there. And then we have two connections onto Alexander Road. I do want to point out...
Did you say Military Cutoff?
Oh, sorry, sir. Market Street. I apologize. I do want to point out that this project has been going on quite for some time, and so we've done substantial community outreach on this. We had, one of our development team actually went knocking door-to-door at the adjacent property owners. The church is actually in support. They are developing a school and a preschool next door, and they were supportive. They sent a letter of support into Planning Commission. We had a community meeting. This project has been through Design Adjustment Committee and pre-TRC, so it can be built as designed under current city codes. The design changed slightly. The design changed slightly, so we sent an update letter to the community. We established an email address where people could email if they had any questions, and we also had the Planning Commission where people could come out and speak. Oops. I'm not sure what I did. Sorry, Dylan. Thank you. And just to show you, this project is across Market Street from Amberly Shores, which was annexed into the city of Wilmington. That project is also at MD seventeen, which is what we're requesting. It has between, excuse me, between seventeen and eighteen units per acre. We are at approximately thirteen units per acre as proposed. They have no workforce housing, and we are proposing twenty-five units of workforce housing as part of the submission. Currently, the site is a tax value of around six hundred thousand dollars. The proposed estimated tax value is forty million. I will say and want to point out that that is a very conservative tax value estimate that we provided to the city. That does not include the increase in land value that will be modified if this sale goes through their contract purchaser. Also, it doesn't take into account the New Hanover County new reevaluations. Again, this is just the proposed site plan because it's hard to ask you to annex something that you don't know what it looks like. This has gone through substantial revisions. As you can see, the project saves multiple areas of trees. The buildings are clustered, and that is in fact to save as many trees as possible on the site. Happy to answer any specific questions. With that, I'm gonna ask Mr. Richard Collier up. He is the civil engineer on this project and can discuss specific things as to utilities and access.
Good evening, Richard Collier with McKimmon Creed. We are doing the civil engineering for the property. Start off with utilities itself. We don't have sewer on the property, but as common, there is sewer adjacent to it at the church and out on Market Streets. We worked with CFPUA for the pump station, extending the force maintenance to provide the sanitary sewer. The water is looped on Alexander and out onto Market Streets, so we performed pressure tests and other things, so we know that we have substantial water and pressure to handle the development as it's designed. Moving on to traffic itself, so DOT, as we all know, is doing the super street on Market Street. It's nearing completion. I don't think it's fully completed, but in this area, it is nearly complete. There are two accesses on to Alexander from Market Street. Both, one has a right turn lane now, the northern one. The southern access will be adding a right turn lane onto Alexander Road based on the traffic study, and then there's a U-turn that is just, just south, as shown on the picture, that allows the folks to take a right and U-turn to go back north. So there are no left-hand turns out of the development on either end of Alexander to go north on Market Street. The access itself that we're talked about, there's going to be gated access for the community, for the community, and then we were talking about originally having a gated access for fire only, for emergency in and out. As we further developed, that particular neighborhood adjacent was developed a number of years ago. It was fully platted. The right-of-way is there for a connection, but the development was never turned over to the HOA or anything. So at this point, the property, any, the roadway and any adjacent property is owned by their heirs. So we could not come up with an easy way or any way to get that access point to make the connection. So what we have done is provided the stub on our side to the road. If in fact that is ever brought where we can make that connection, then there would be an additional access on the rear for emergency services only. And again, the access into and out is of course on, the blue road is Alexander, the white road is Alexander Place, but we don't have access to Alexander Place at this time because of the property in question. There's right-of-ways back within Greenview Ranches, but we can't get to them because the Greenview Ranches, there's a little piece of property in between it that a lady in Alaska owns, and we can't, she's not wanting to sell her land.
Mr. Collier, we have a question here for Mr. Waddell.
Mr. Collier, just so I can fully understand, so you have, right now, there's, there's two access points for the, for the community. You're anticipating a third access point that would be emergency only?
Correct.
But, but if you don't get that one, you could still dedicate one of these as the, as what fire could get into. Do you know which one?
The main entrance there in the corner is where the turn in Alexander would be the main access, and we've worked with, with the fire department and the fire marshal's office in realigning the roads to make it better for them so that they know they can get around and all the emergency services can get in and out adequately.
Great, thank you.
Yes, sir. So we can't get access to Greenview Ranches. We can't get access to Ogden Pines. It's, it's all about the property that's in between, and all of these roads that I'm showing here are owned by either HOAs or private individuals. So there was not really an effective way to get a back access out of this, although H.H. Hunt did put through considerable effort to try and get that, get that to work. Again, Alexander Place to the north is private. Alexander Road that we will be attaching to is a state route. It is under capacity. There's not a tremendous amount of traffic on it. When it exits, anything that exits on Alexander can only make a right turn onto Market Street from either end of Alexander. We do have the secondary access on the north. It's a smaller access, but it is a second way in and out of the neighborhood that gives good circulation in and out of the project.
Thanks, and he's gonna switch it back to me. I just wanted to point out staff's concerns about the access road in Alexander Place being a local road. Canopy Point was annexed and approved by the city of Wilmington in two thousand and twenty-two. It is near our project, and it is also on a local designated road. And so annexations have been local roads. In fact, most of the roads within the city of Wilmington are considered local roads. The, the definition of Collector Road and Arterial Road, they can differ from DOT to the city of Wilmington, to the Market Street corridor plan, to the design, design guidelines. So we just wanted to point out this, that it has happened in the past in a similar So again, comprehensive plan, why did we think this complied? The comprehensive plan, this is a page out of the comprehensive plan on the left and then our project on the right. It talks about Market Street in Elijah, this is over by Biggers Market, and not accessing things off of Market Street, creating a baggage road where you access the housing, so you're not having multiple curb cuts into Market Street. And if you, that's exactly what Alexander Road provides here, is access onto Alexander Road, which is an under-capacity road, and then we're not adding additional curb cuts onto Market Street. And this is a good slide to show you. That acreage in front of us between Alexander Road and Market Street, it's currently on the market. It's about five and a half acres. It's right now zoned residential. Based on the trajectory of zoning out in that area, we fully anticipate they would probably come forward with some kind of a commercial request for that property. Again, this is from the city code, the city of Wilmington's Design Preferences Manual, and it talks about encouraging multifamily units to be set back from major corridors and thoroughfares. So again, we are set back from Market Street. We're actually even set back from Alexander Road to save the trees. This is also from a city plan. It's the Greenway Plan. That yellow, the yellow mark is, is our property. We are proposing to connect our project with a sidewalk multi-use path down to Market Street, so there would be connection for pedestrians to access. In addition, by not having direct access onto Market Street, there is not another conflict point on the multi-use path along Market Street, so that we're not adding additional curb cuts and traffic for pedestrian conflicts. This is just a rendering of what our four-story building might look like. This one is just a rendering because we wanted to show the coastal theme that, that we are hoping to have. Most of the building, all of the buildings are three-story, except the one building in the center, which is a four-story, which would have an elevator. And again, we are proposing ten percent of the units to be workforce housing. The initial proposal had been at eighty percent AMI, but after hearing from city council, watching your concerns, talking to stakeholders, talking to Planning Commission, we have decided we're going to ask to propose that half of those be sixty percent AMI and half of those be eighty percent AMI. I did talk with Ms. Moretti, the finance director. I didn't want to throw a curveball. That does not change her financial analysis at all, and so there's no impact to the city for us offering those additional affordable units as part of this project. And again, just to show some of the amenities and enhanced design that we would offer as part of the project with the proposed rents. And that brings us to the fact that this project is gonna be highly amenitized, so even with those affordable units, people will be able to access the amenities of the area, boat storage, garages, EV charging stations. In fact, the city code requires two percent of the spaces to be EV. We are proposing ten, and that is eligible to be increased just based on the need of our, of our residents. In addition, there are some soils on site that are contaminated as part of the project. Those would be remediated, and all of our project is National Green Building Bronze Designation certified. We are ideally located between a major, a plethora of services. We've got Walmart. We've got a daycare that's getting built right next to us. You can walk to Novant Health if you needed to or take your bike. There's also a public transit nearby. We contacted WAVE, and there are already two micro-transit sites. I'm happy to explain that to anybody who's not familiar because it's fascinating to me. It's like Uber, but through WAVE. And there's an app on your phone. I used it, and they'll come to your house and pick you up and take you anywhere within your zone. We're in zone two. We've also discussed the fact that if we wanted to have a pickup on our site, but there are already two conveniently located to our project. And as Mr. Chambers said, and I mentioned previously, there's a major, a lot of non-residential around the site, and we think there's only going to be more as Market Street continues to develop. And then something we're particularly proud of is the tree preservation on site. I don't know if you saw all of the green, but there is a beautiful cypress that you can see on, on the right that we're preserving. We're trying to preserve as much of the natural habitat as we can. The site was redesigned quite a few times for that. In addition, if you see the picture on the top left, that's an oak tree at the entrance, and so the entrance was designed with a split entrance to be able to design, feature and enhance that, that oak tree there. And with that, again, we are happy to answer any other questions. We do have our traffic engineer here, Mr. Ronald Stevenson. We did a traffic impact analysis as part of the rezoning request, so we have all of that information if there are any questions.
Yes, Councilmember Spears.
So Amy, my question is, maybe I'm just missing it, but what, what's the significance of the annexation into the city of Wilmington?
Yes, sir. So right now, we are in the county, and we're asking to be annexed into the city of Wilmington in order to be city residents. There's quite a few reasons that happen. Initially, H.H. Hunt came and they met with city staff and brought this project forward. Well, not this project. It was actually a drastically different project. It was about twenty more units. It had all four-story buildings. The tree save wasn't in there, and this was before I was involved, but H.H. Hunt's here if you have, if you have any other questions. And staff said, no, that's just too much. Oh, and by the way, it's in the county. Go talk to them. But by that time, the design had already been designed with city of Wilmington standards, and it, it continued to be so. And so they decided to come back to the city of Wilmington. A few of the main reasons, I want to get to a site so you can see. The county does not have separate road standards. They only follow DOT standards. So they don't have, all roads have to be a certain width. They have to be a certain curvature. The city of Wilmington actually has standards that allow you to narrow your rights-of-way, which decreases your impervious surface. It allows you, our engineers thought, better circulation, and if they're like waving their hands behind me, if you'll let me know. Also, another thing, the county, all of their stormwater goes through the local department DEQ office, and I, I understand they're very busy. Things take a very, very long time to get processed through. The city of Wilmington's stormwater process is actually much superior. Things get processed faster, and you also have quality and quantity measurements. And so with that, they just decided to keep proceeding with the city over the past year or so.
So had you even met with the county at all?
Yeah, so after that first meeting with planning staff, planning staff said, hey, it's in the county. They went to the, the county, and they had the same reaction to that first plan as, as the, as the city planners did.
So they said no, too?
But they have not seen this plan. That was the plan with the twenty-plus more units, not the tree save and all the four-story buildings. They have not seen this plan. This plan, that was only a concept with the county once.
So do you want us to say no so they can see this plan?
No, please. We would love you to say yes. The, the H.H. Hunt is new to the area, and they want to be part of Wilmington. You know, when you come to Wilmington, everybody has a Wilmington address, but you're not really a Wilmington resident. And so that was important to them, which is why they met with staff first. So we would ask you to approve the annexation and then ultimately the rezoning.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Burnett, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. My question actually, Amy, is really for staff. When you made your presentation, staff, it seemed like you went through all of the checklists that said they meet these requirements. Were you saying the reason staff wanted to deny it is because of the sewer issue?
I'll let Mr. Chambers.
Yeah, and I was addressing you, Mr. Chambers. I apologize.
And I'm gonna lean on my city attorney to make sure I'm not overstepping my bounds because we're supposed to separate the annexation discussion from that rezoning discussion. We believe that the, the project was just too intense for that location. It was in the middle of a R-15, single-family zoned area, and only had access to the local street. We thought a lower density made more sense in that location.
Okay, so wasn't the, it wasn't the sewer piece?
What we presented this evening was strictly our review of the annexation policy.
Okay.
Reverend Burnett, if I could.
Yes, ma'am.
So the, the annexation policy says, if I may read it, and I try not to read in case I mess things up in here. Development associated with an annexation shall have appropriate water and sewer services and street access. That's all it says, appropriate. So I think there's just a different opinion of what appropriate is. It also goes on to say that any, anything may, any improvements would be at the developer's cost. So that connection to water and sewer that Mr. Collier was talking about would be at our cost, well, not mine, but the developers, so.
And the developers have agreed to, to handle that?
Yes, sir. They've actually been in talks with CFPUA, and I think the lift station is gonna require some improvements. And so CFPUA has actually asked, you know, oftentimes there's a cost share. If a developer is already working on a project, it's cheaper for CFPUA to piggyback on that. And so if this project gets approved and the lift station has to be updated for this project, they've asked for the potential cost share agreement to do even better improvements so that more people in this area of the county could access the, the water and sewer services.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Joyner.
Hey, Amy, good evening. I'm just curious, how did, how did your client get so far into the process before realizing that the property was not in the city limits?
Sure, and I don't want to misspeak at all, so if I can, if I can bring them up. So I'm gonna ask Mr. Wumble from H.H. Hunt to come down and talk about their market studies and things like that.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, members of council. Tyler Wumble with H.H. Hunt. Yeah, Mr. Joyner, to answer your question directly, we knew that this was in the county when we first put this property under contract. And what we, what we looked at is, the first thing that I did was, was find the local expert, which was Richard Collier in this case, from the civil engineer firm of McKimmon Creed, and asked Richard, you know, Richard, help, help us navigate this process, right? Because we're in the county. What does that look like? And Richard advised us. And Richard advised us to some of the higher standards that the city has, and how that would help us. And then we also learned about some of the affordable housing programs that, so we put this property under contract in February of 2023. So it's been a long time. And at that time, the county did not have the affordable housing programs in place that the city did. So that was something that we learned as to, hey, we really liked the thought and the idea of that. So that's what really drove us to the city, Mr. Joyner. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, awesome, absolutely. Thank you all.
We have another question. Councilmember Andrews.
And I apologize for misspeaking, that's why I always like to have my experts here.
Thanks.
Yeah, okay, so my understanding was that the reason that you didn't want to approach the county was because their road standards were that of the DOT. They didn't have the ability to accept narrower roads?
That's one of the reasons, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yep. And the stormwater issues. So as Mr. Wamboldt said, the higher design. Okay.
Amy, just curious.
Sure.
Alexander Road, obviously a state-maintained road, anything in the county is state-maintained.
Unless it's private, yes.
That's correct.
Yep.
So in respect to Alexander Road, with the concern that the city staff has in maybe the widening of that road, what, did you even evaluate the possibility of widening a little bit of Alexander, it seems, to the south from Market back to the first entrance into the property?
Yes, sir. As I said, the whole project ran through a traffic impact analysis, and Mr. Stevenson can speak, Ronald Stevenson from our traffic engineer can speak to this, but that was not a requirement of the traffic impact analysis for widening. And as they stated, it's at an A, and so any kind of widening warrants. So, Ronald?
Ronald can while you with traffic in just a second, but I met with the department early on in this to talk about that section of Alexander. The lanes are about 12 feet wide now, so they are at their normal width for that area. The department was more concerned on us having a sidewalk connection if we would do it out to Market Streets. We would continue the pedestrian way, they said they would allow that. They didn't necessarily want curb and gutter on the street at that point because there's already roadside swells on it, but if we put the sidewalk in, it would have a curb and gutter on it, so it'll improve its drainage as well. So there are some things we will do to Alexander, but an overall widening, no, sir, we did not, they did not.
If you did a turn lane or something there that you could widen it a little bit?
There just wasn't any traffic to handle that, but most of the traffic worry is on Market.
I know, Richard, but I guess.
Understood.
It's not you, it's not, and I'm sure your traffic analysis is going to reflect that. It's staff and our technical standards and fire departments, and, you know, they want to run the way to get in and out of things, you know?
Right.
That's why I was just asking the question if it could be done.
In the curb, putting a left-turn lane in would be more for the church than it would be for the apartments, just in the way that the turn is there.
I don't even know, how many feet is that out to Market? How many feet is that, Richard, out to Market?
500 at most.
Okay, all right. Mr. Rambor.
Richard, excuse me, Richard, you mentioned there were some, to use your words, some other things that we might do. What are those other things?
The other things on the street itself is adding curb and gutter to be able to provide for the sidewalk. If the sidewalk's there with the shoulder section, you've got a much wider recovery zone that's needed. So if you put a curb section in, then that would take care of the recovery zone, and then the sidewalk over multi-use path can be built a little bit closer to the street and then not exceed the right-of-way width. The curb also adds catch basins in to start pulling it into the system of the underground system that's already out there, and all that runs through and heads back out to the waterway, so.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, Ms. Spears, I'm sorry, Councilmember Spears has a question.
How did the planning commission vote on it? They hadn't seen it yet.
Mr. Chambers, do you have something?
We had planning commission, Mr. Spears, and they recommended 5-1 approval of the rezoning request.
Okay, 5 to 1.
Yes, sir.
Now, Mr. Collier, are you on the planning commission?
He recused himself, so he didn't vote. That's why it's 6.
All right, okay.
Can we read the traffic guys up here? Yes, sir. Seems to be revolving around traffic right now.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I think Richard did a great job of explaining some of the design elements of what we can do at the driveway in Alexander. The only thing I'll add from more of a nerdy traffic study perspective is the Alexander Road is carrying, as you've heard staff say, very little traffic today. It's more than adequate for the traffic that's on it today, and it's certainly more than adequate to carry the traffic from this site. So I don't see any issues with Alexander Road being able to handle the traffic, and we're, even with this project built out, we're still well under 50% of the capacity of the road, so, of Alexander. So it's designed to carry more traffic than it is today, and really, it's functioning like a collector's street really today. It collects all these driveways that come off of it and funnels that traffic to the bigger road, which is Market Street, and that's what a collector's street.
So right now, how many, we've got about 800 cars per day?
It's about 7, between 700 and 800 cars a day.
And then the anticipated impact from this project is 1,200?
This is about 1,600 plus cars a day.
1,600, 17, 18, 19.
And not all of those, of course, are going in one direction, so, but if you assume they all were going in one direction, then you're at 20, was that 2,400?
2,400, yeah.
So, and that's well under capacity of Alexander Road.
And what is the capacity of Alexander?
Well, I'll cite a couple of things. The staff report, I believe, mentioned somewhere around 4,000 to 5,000 cars a day. I would say that's probably, if anything, that's a little bit lower than what it probably can handle. So, but I'll, we'll go with that since it's in the staff report for between 4,000 and 5,000 cars a day. And so we're half of that at best.
So, Ms. Chambers, the capacity of the roadway, it seems that that's where the hangup is with you folks, with the staff's concerns, correct?
With the annexation, yes, sir.
So if the capacity is 4,000, according to what this gentleman has shared with us, and with the anticipated 1,600 units plus the 800, you're 2,400. What's the concern?
The concern is it's tripling the number of trips on the street and the development. Again, we believe it's just too intense for that location.
Okay. All right. And let me ask this, if there was any improvements that could be made to Alexander, what would suffice for you folks to support that?
Unfortunately, that's way outside of my lane.
Okay, all right. Ms. Spears.
So I guess this question is for staff and the traffic expert. I'm a local Wilmingtonan, so I always look for the back roads. So I just looked up Alexander and, you know, I think what Brian is saying, what you all are saying is, you know, Alexander Road is, it'll be under capacity even with, if this development was to go through, and that's true, it probably could withstand whatever traffic impact, future traffic impact. But Market Street is the greater issue. It's like when we had a development for Kerr Avenue. So even if you have right-only turns onto Market, you'll still have an issue with traffic, not on Alexander Road or Alexander Place, but on Market Street. And I don't know how great of a job this super street is going to be. I complain about it every time I'm in that part of the county, so I'm not very impressed. I hope the state hears that, the DOT hears that. But, I mean, staff, I don't see an issue with what we have here, and if you all are saying that it checks the boxes, I don't really want to go against your recommendation. But I don't really see the issue outside of just, I mean, if they're going to connect sewer, stormwater, whatever, I don't really see what the main issue is and why it wasn't supported by staff. I mean, outside of just Market Street, there's really no, if you look at Alexander, there's no other way that you can get around getting on Market. So I get that, but everything else seems like they've checked the boxes on that. I don't know if that's really a question or just.
Again, that's just, I'm just repeating myself, the trip on the cars on the local street is a concern. Market Street is well over capacity out in that location. We didn't really consider that.
Yeah, but I mean, you all didn't address Market, you addressed Alexander, and I mean, you have a point, kinda, but the bigger concern is the traffic impact that'll be on Market Street, but to me, I can't speak for anybody else, but, I mean, what they have there is, seems like a pretty solid project.
When we evaluated the annexation, we're looking at the infrastructure that's directly impacted by this project, and this was kind of off of Market Street, so that's kind of, I think that's why we kind of focused it on Alexander Road.
Gotcha. Well, I'm confused.
Well, I can say about Market Street that the improvements that are being done will help some with that. Also, even the Hampstead bypass, when it's done, will help carry some traffic off of Market in this area so they can take military cutoff all the way up and around. That'll help some. So I think, you know, what I think this project has to offer is a little bit unique in that we're not, we're not even requesting a new driveway on the Market Street. So we're using the driveways or roads that's already there, that is well under capacity, so we don't need to request a new driveway on the Market Street, which is really good. So I mean, this is an ideal situation for, you know, if there's going to be development along Market Street, this is the ideal scenario. No new driveways, utilizing existing roads. Those access points, as Richard covered in his presentation, are going to be limited movements. So it's really an ideal scenario. If you're going to have development along Market Street, this is exactly what you would like to have. Drive, you know, access onto side roads that are already there, so no new driveways on Market, and we're able to utilize a road that is well under capacity today. And I would say there's probably not too many of those along Market Street, so this is actually an ideal scenario for.
I hear you, I hear you, but there's, I mean, like I said, looking at Alexander Road, there's no other out, out of that area at all, except Market Street.
And there's two, you know, the good thing is Alexander Road, it loops back around, so just say there's some accident, you know, along Alexander Road at some, somewhere, then you, you know, you have another way in and out. So it's, again, it's a pretty, good setup for access and traffic flow. There's two access points on the Market Street, both restricted movements, a road that is well under capacity today, and even with this project, would still be well under capacity. So it's a, you know, I would say from a traffic standpoint, it's actually a good use of existing infrastructure. If it's already there and has plenty of capacity and we're using some of it, that's ideal.
Mr. Waddell has a question.
The business that's before us today is simply an ordinance to extend the corporate limits, whether or not we want to consider an annexation. We're going to have a real bite at the apple. Madam Attorney, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we're going to have a real bite of the apple in a few weeks, a month or so, when the actual conditional rezoning comes before us, that we can say yay or nay, add conditions to, like we do with any other conditional rezoning. Am I, is that correct?
Yes, sir. This is only having to do with the annexation itself, which is why the issues are really only the sewer and the traffic impact. It's the infrastructure issues that are the factors for the annexation. And planning commission, just as a correction, what they approved was.
They did not vote on the annexation, correct?
No, they did not vote on the annexation. They approved the project 5 to 1, and that's what will come back to you in January. And so planning commission has not voted on the actual annexation. So that is what is before you tonight, is the annexation itself, and that's what, the only conditions that staff is saying that they don't believe that it meets as far as annexation and infrastructure are the sewer and the traffic conditions. And so council could pass the annexation tonight and then still have, like you said, a second bite at the apple with regard to the project in January.
So this is really, for my edification, I think I maybe have asked you this before and I forgot, but let's say we go 7:00 up here tonight and say we're good with an annexation, and then the rezoning, for some reason, they bring something crazy and we decide 7:00, no, to turn down the rezoning, does the annexation stand?
Yes, sir.
It does?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does that ever happen? Did that ever happen?
Yeah.
My question was, if we voted on the annexation tonight and it went through, but then we'd voted to deny the public hearing, if the annexation would stand or not?
We used to do that all in the same night. In other words, the rezoning came right behind this, and I just was talking to the mayor. If y'all changed that, I must have missed that night.
Yes, sir.
But we did change it.
We have done them both ways, and several years ago, we started trying to steer them into the lane of doing them separately so that it doesn't appear to be contract zoning and so that it's, because there were complaints and that it appeared like this was already a, quote, done deal from the public when they would both go through on the same night. And so it's an internal decision that was made to try and separate them so that you would be able to have those discussions separately without it seeming like one was dependent on the other.
Ms. Spears, if I may, I'm going to follow up on that point real quick, if you don't mind.
I just want to say this before you say that. I don't want anyone in the room, especially you and the city attorney, to think that I thought the planning commission voted on annexation.
No, sir, I just wanted to make that clear for everybody else.
Oh, okay.
I knew you understood.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
The annexation, the HH Hunt, the applicant doesn't yet own the property, correct?
Correct.
So how can we annex a property? How does the annexation stand if they don't own the property? How can we annex a property for something?
The applicant, the property owners had to sign off on the petition.
On the application, yeah.
And so that was part of the sufficiency of the application. The property owners signed off on that.
Yeah, it makes perfect sense, thank you.
Yes, sir, sure.
And so at this point, it's a risk that the developer is taking with that month in between.
Yes, sir. And so just real quick, because it's come up, this is just the annexation, but again, it's hard to talk about what you'd be annexing without seeing what we're asking you to annex and do. But again, the proposed tax value that we submitted with our application, so when you submit an application, you get the owners to sign off and you submit what you think is a development project cost sheet. And so that was submitted very conservatively with the current land value and then just the buildings. But again, as you all know, as time goes on, building costs increase, there's going to be a tax reevaluation soon, the cost of the land, once the sale goes through, will be drastically different than the $600,000 tax value cost of it now. And so the cities and the development sheet that the applicant submitted were based on this approximate 40 million. We really do anticipate the end project to be around 75 million. So right now, you know, in the five-year projection, the city is looking at anywhere from 220 to $320,000 revenue to the city from this project, and that's on the lower values, so.
Sure.
I think a lot of discussion of why, why'd you come to the city and all of that, I think we kind of got lost in the weeds on that, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe a good part of that is because we, this city of Wilmington has, it's really a testament to the prioritization of affordable housing and putting those mechanisms in place to allow developers like HH Hunt to come forward and bring a project that allows some affordable housing and puts it in there for, you know, a certain density bonus to get a project through, you know, that may or may not have been a big part of the reason that y'all came to the city. Personally, I'm glad that you did, and I hope that is part of the reason, because I think it shines a light on the prioritization that we've done up here as a city and to put affordable housing and workforce housing at the forefront of what we're doing. forefront of what we're doing.
Ms. Ronmar?
Amy, how long will the, the reduced rates, the workforce housing, how long will they last?
Fifteenth year, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This time, I'm gonna open up the public hearing and ask if anyone in the public wishes to speak on item PH two, for or against. The, the time limit is 30 minutes total. If you'll come forward and state your name for the record and where you live.
Good evening all. Logan Secord, 2900 Newtown Drive, Wilmington, North Carolina. Thank you all again for serving our community, especially coming out on a quite frigid Wilmington evening. I even heard there were snow flurries today, which scared me. You all will, will recall, in September, I gave a small presentation to this council around the excellent work that, you know, we've done here in Wilmington around workforce housing and affordable housing, as Councilmember Waddell has highlighted. We've done a great job at getting units around the 80% AMHI and incentives such as that. But as I highlighted in that evening, we have a gap, those who don't have support between 60 to 80% AMHI. In that same meeting, Amy introduced me to Tyler, and Tyler went out of his way to connect with me, and we met for coffee, and I told him the same thing. I said, Tyler, I have nothing to offer you but a plea for help. This is what we need. We don't have any mechanism to enforce this, we don't have any additional incentive, I can only tell you that this is the right thing to do, and it's something we need. And he said, you know what, we can do that. And he took it back, and he worked with his company, and they came back at half of those units being at 60% instead of 80%. You all know I'm very much into sustainability. When we met, I talked through all sorts of concerns on sustainability, and I was again impressed on the very intentional, above and beyond effort that HH Hunt made to make this development sustainable. I recognize that this is for the annexation, but you can't ju, judge the what without the why, and the why is the development. And you must also ask the who. Who do we want in the community of Wilmington? I want developers who are looking to be in Wilmington to see this. I want them to see developers coming into our community and us encouraging them to not just do the bare minimum, not just do something because it's profitable, to do something because it's the right thing to do. A lot of the discussion here was echoed at the Planning Commission, even though it was on the actual zoning request, Commissioner Spears, you highlighted some of the traffic items, it was discussed, you know, the setback from Market Road, a lot of the discussion here, and the Planning Commission determined that this development was a very good thing for the community. So, recognizing that this is regarding the annexation, but, and we will be back next month, hopefully, to talk about the development, I encourage you to encourage developers to say, this is what we want to see. We want to see people going above and beyond to make our community a better place. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, anybody else?
I need a stool to stand on. Mayor Protem, mayor, members of council. I'm Natalie English, I live at 4317 People Drive in Wilmington. I also am the CEO of the Wilmington Chamber of Commerce, and I hadn't heard about this project before tonight, so I'm really glad that I was in the audience to hear about it. And as Logan said before, you know, we, as a community, know, we do not have enough housing, period, for the people who want to live here, and who we need to live here to fill the jobs that we have to continue to grow our economy, to support the people who live here. I think that the annexation is a, a great way to fund a lot of those services, that, I mean, it's a positive for the city of Wilmington, and I hope you'll pass this, and I hope you'll pass the rezoning request, because I believe these are the kinds of projects we need in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Madam Clerk, have you seen, received any additional commentary?
No, sir, I have not.
Okay. Are there any further questions from council? All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing and ask for the wishes of council. We have a motion to approve by Mayor Protem Clifford Barnett, second by Councilmember Luke Waddell. Any further discussion?
Just one item. I hope this passes as well, but I wanna make sure you guys build it like one of those pretty pictures I saw on the screen, okay?
All right, all in favor of that? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by Councilmember Joiner, second by Councilmember Ravenbar. Discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. That brings us to our next item business, which is ordinances. Item O1 is an ordinance making supplemental appropriation to the Public Improvement slash Equipment Fund for Department of Homeland Security Port Security Grant and Local Match in the amount of $162,191 for the purchase of drones, accessories, and equipment for rapid response vehicles. At this time, I'd like to recognize our manager, Mr. Cottle. Mr. Cottle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Deputy Chief Alex Satello will overview this item for us.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. Mayor, you stole my thunder. We applied and received a port security grant earlier in the year, which required a 25% match, which is what we're here for, and the, the items, the money is in the general fund grant match account, in the amount of $40,548, just to expand our drone program. That'll buy us a couple, four more drones and equipment for our vehicles.
Okay. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you. What are the wishes of council in respect to the item? We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Joiner, second by Councilmember Spears. Discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by Councilmember Ravenbar, second by Councilmember Spears. Discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. That brings us to our next item business, which is item R1, is a resolution authorizing the city manager to change the third-party administrator of the city's 457 Deferred Compensation Plan to Empower Financial Services Incorporated, and to make other necessary changes to the city's supplemental retirement income plan. At this time, I'd like to recognize the city manager, Mr. Cottle. Mr. Cottle?
Mr. Mayor, Human Resources Director Clayton Roberts will overview this item and answer questions that council had posed at the last meeting.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council. Before you is, is a resolution that authorizes the city manager to do two things. One of those things is to change our third-party administrator for the city's 457 Deferred Compensation Plan from Mission Square to Empower, which is the same company that oversees our 401K plan. The second thing this resolution does is it grants the city manager the authority to direct the 4.5% contribution for all employees to the 401K plan, which, with, which is a requirement of the North County Department of State Treasurer that we've discussed at the last two council meetings. This item was continued again from your November 19th council meeting. At that meeting, you required, requested that staff meet with the impacted employees to inform them of the changes and to answer any questions that, that they have. So, over the last two weeks, we have conducted nine meetings with a plan representative from Empower. Most participants at those meetings were members of the Wilmington Fire Department, as, as we've indicated, those are the employees that are gonna be impacted the most by this change. During those meetings, our plan representative from Empower was able to answer all the questions and concerns raised by our employees. Most common questions that we received, one was, how will the 401K early withdrawal penalty impact me as, as an employee who has all my money in the 457? As we've indicated the last few meetings, the penalty is waived for public safety employees who are age 50 and retired, or have 25 years of service. It's also waived for those who meet the IRS definition of being permanently disabled. The second commonly asked question we got was, now that you're splitting my funds, I have all my funds in the 457, now you're putting 4.5% into 401K, that's starting out at a zero account balance, I'm missing out on that compound interest. The Empower representative was able to demonstrate that the employees will still earn the same amount of interest at the same rate if they put funds in similar investment accounts. So, if they have their 457 money invested in a certain fund, and then they take the 4.5% and invest it in a similar fund in the 401K, it's gonna earn the same amount of interest, and at the end of the day, they're not gonna be losing any money. So, they were able to demonstrate an example of that. So, at the end of the day, our employees will be, will not be losing any benefits that they have today. The only difference is that the 4.5% all-employee contribution will be directed to the 401K for everyone effective January 1st. Again, this is to become in compliance with the Department of State Treasurer, this is not a request that staff is making. One of the most significant benefits to our employees by making these changes and switching to the 457 plan administrator to Empower is that there will be lower fees, which will save our employees thousands of dollars, meaning more money they can keep and put towards their retirement. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that council has on this item.
Are there any questions? Councilman Spear?
Clayton, my question is, I, and I, I can't speak for the fire department or any city of Wilmington employees or first responders, but I think one of the biggest benefits with the 457 plan was the ability to take your money out early without being penalized, and, and so that has gone away, correct?
No, that, that, the 45, that 457 plan is still intact today, and, and the city's gonna still be putting money in that plan, and those, they can still withdraw that money early at any age. It's the 401K that has the early withdrawal penalty, but as, as I said, i- if long as they are age 50 and they're retired, or have at least 25 years of service at any age, they can withdraw their funds from the 401K without that 10% penalty.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Councilman Ravenbar?
I'm, I'm, I just need for you to do that one more time, what you just said, because that's, that's been kind of a hanging point.
Sure.
So, I think what I understood you to say with the 401K, there's, somebody that's age 50 can pull his money out?
As, as long as they're separated, yes, they can pull their money out at age 50, or as long as they have 25 years of service. So, let's say they retire at age 48, and they have 30 years of service, they can take their money out. If they retire at age 45 and have 25 years of service, they can take their money out without penalty.
What changed? Because I swear, a, a couple of the, three meetings ago, it seemed like that wasn't the case, Clayton.
So, we've learned over the course of the cou, of the last few weeks, some new information. No surprise, the federal government IRS does not make understanding these plans very easy. But we've learned over the course of time that these are some of the benefits that come to public se, safety employees with a 457 and 401K plan. And so, staff was just unaware of these, these provisions. That would be some, the, the Empower representative, financial advisors were aware of that, but that wasn't something the staff was aware of, just to be honest with you.
In, in the event, with the new administration coming in, the new state treasurer, that they don't have the same concerns, could, could, I hate to say, go back the other way, but could it be reversed?
Staff could certainly go back to Empower in, say, six months, and, and ask that question, and see if, if they'll take another look at the, the ruling.
But that would be up to the state treasurer and his department?
That's correct.
Good, thank you.
And my understanding is that we were the only city in the state that was actually doing the 457 plan?
Yes, out of all thousand planned participants, we're the only one.
All right.
Just gotten away with it.
Okay.
But we didn't know we were getting away with anything.
We didn't, you're right, sir.
All right.
And it, yes, sir, Councilman Waddell?
And a big part of the continuing continuations was communicating that, that's a lot of alliteration, communicating that to, to the staff. You, you guys have adequately, I know, done that, but just wanna reiterate that that was, that was done in earnest.
It was, yes, and, and I'll apologize to the fire department, firefighters, you know, for not doing more communication. We were just, you know, it, it, this happened in the spring, we were pushing back, we were trying to come up with a plan, a transition plan, and I know that Meredith communicated that this was coming in the summer to council, but we didn't wanna get ahead of council either in this. So, again, definitely lessons learned, definitely know, communicate early on, so we can prevent some of this happening again.
We appreciate you sticking with us on it, and, and really doing the extra mile.
I appreciate your work with this issue as well. It's, Councilman Spears? Clayton, so the reception from staff overall was good? They were okay?
I'm, I'm gonna be honest with you, it was, it was mixed. I mean, we're not gonna make everyone happy, but I think it, it satisfied, they got the, the answers to a lot of the concerns that they had.
Any other questions? All right, then I'll ask the council, what's your wish? Okay. All right, we have a motion by council. Councilwoman Andrews, and second by Councilmember Luke Waddell. All, you've heard the question, all in favor, let me know by this sign aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those who oppose? All right, the ayes have it, and it's so ordered. Thank you.
Next item business, item R2, which is resolution adopting a sustainable municipal building policy. At this time, I'd like to recognize the city manager, Mr. Cottle. Mr. Cottle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me, this item was presented to you at your last meeting. Dave Ingram, our sustainability manager here, is to, is here to go over a brief presentation and to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. Again, this presentation is a follow-up to the agenda briefing that we provided a couple of weeks ago on this policy. The policy, again, is really looking at making our future buildings more energy efficient, preserving our natural resources, improving the health and comfort and, and productivity of our city staff and the visitors to our buildings, as well as just wise use of the money that we spend on our utilities and all of that for our, our city facilities. We have got some, again, some real-life examples that indicate the benefits of pursuing sustainable building and, and lead building design. Some real-life examples are comparing our fire station number three to our fire station number five on Shipyard Boulevard. These are the facilities where, again, that we presented a couple of weeks ago. And what we found from our annual energy tracking is that our lead facility is performing significantly better than even another well-performing building, Shipyard Fire Station. But we've shown that it performs about 14% better, it's got a lower energy use intensity, and tho, those savings lead to real-world benefits in our, our cost for operating those, those facilities. So, what the policy is proposing is projects that are over 10,000 sque, 10,000 square feet must achieve the U.S. Green Building Council's LEED Silver Designation, and those, that applies to all city-owned and occupied future buildings. And again, the, there is a waiver option for projects that are 14% cost prohibitive, so we actually bumped that number up a little bit from the, based on some of your suggestions. For projects that are under 10,000 square feet, we're proposing a LEED certified designation. That's one down from the silver level, and again, that same waiver option applies to these facilities as well. Just a, a quick summary of the changes from the policy that we presented two weeks ago in Section 4, under the applicability, we added language that it's, this, this policy does not apply to any leased facilities, does not apply to any tenant spaces where this, we are not occupying the space, and it's not gonna apply to any emergency repairs we may have to make. Also, under that applicability section, we added a effective date. If you support this policy tonight, it'll be, become effective tomorrow. Under Section 5, the waivers, as I mentioned earlier, we bumped it up from 10% to 14% cost prohibitive percentage. And also, Section 5 waivers, we added some language as far as when you all will be informed if the city manager is going to grant a waiver, along with some additional information about the project. And with that, I'm happy to answer any additional questions you may have.
Dave, just, just out of curiosity, with solar, 'cause we're gonna see a...
a lot of, or at least I'm beginning to see a lot of solar being implemented around the community, are we looking at solar for, I, I mean, for some of these things?
Absolutely. Uh, in, in the policy, details about the policy, uh, that's one of the areas that we insist that the projects pursue is, uh, renewable energy on any new facilities that we're constructing. That'll, you know, help us e, drive down our, our costs even more. If we can offset a certain amount of energy with solar produced onsite, it's just going to make our costs go down that much more, as well as help, helping us meet our greenhouse gas emission goals.
So when we're looking at these buildings and I'm sure we're evaluating the cost differences and what it would cost to implement the solar as opposed to not implementing the solar, is it, I, I know years ago, the, the cost of solar was pretty significant, but I would imagine over time with technology, it's come down a lot.
It's come down greatly. Yes, sir.
Because I was at an MP the other day walking around and I see some of the lights, uh, that were, I guess the lights are on solar now, most of the lights out there?
Absolutely.
That they're using for, for play at night?
There, there are solar lighting options now that you don't even have to tie into the grid.
Wow. Interesting.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Waddell?
Yeah, um, my primary concern with the previous iteration, uh, was, was the, some of the ambiguity in the language, specifically how it was going to affect tenant outfits in the Skyline Center, which we've been, we've had phenomenal, uh, progress recently. I appreciate y'all addressing that. It seems that that's been properly addressed. So anyone who's interested in, in leasing the Skyline Center that has tenant outfits that they, that they're going to do, uh, in order to occupy the building, will not be required to, uh, undergo these same standards, correct?
That's correct.
All right. And then, uh, as well as the recent outfit projects that was, um, voted on for the, the clerk's office, the new council chambers and, uh, one other item, so those will or will not be affected by this policy?
As, as those are projects already underway, uh, the effective date is not until tomorrow.
Okay. And then, uh, with, can you go back to the, the capital, the cost prohibitive percentages? So is that, how are we calculating that? So is that off the capital, um, expense? So if the capital expense is 14% greater than, how do we calculate that 14% del, delta, basically? And I know it's at the city manager's discretion, on whether or not to then pursue it or override it? Can you break down the, how that will work?
Shall I, shall I defer that one to the, to the city manager?
The, the intent was it would be overall cost of project if it was exceeded originally by 10%, but now it's gone to 14%. So it would be overall project cost, it would not be any segment thereof.
I guess my question is, how, for, for new projects moving forward, are we going to be running two cost analysis? How will we ever know if we're having to, if we're doing it under, under this new policy and to, to whatever LEED certification is required under that policy, how will we know if there's a, a, a cost, a capital expense of 14% or not?
Lead, LEED certification items should be noted in bid documents, and so you should be able to pull those numbers out as a total of, of the, uh, overall project cost.
That, that won't inhibit our ability to, to move projects forward? Or in a, in a timely manner?
I, I wouldn't think so, no, sir.
That's it for me right now, thank you.
Councilmember Andrews?
No, I was just going to suggest that probably somebody who wanted a waiver from the city manager would probably come forward with the numbers.
It's just us, it's the city. This policy is just on the city. So who, the waiver is, yeah, how, how are you going to know if it's 14% higher internally? Because this is just city projects.
Generally speaking, we're going to bid something out that's going to be that large. And so we're going to ask, we're going to put out the bid specifications, what the LEED certification items are, and then those will be specified. Um, and then that will be a portion of, that will, that will be totaled and applied to the portion of the total project. And is that 14% or, or less?
So what we're going to have to do is evaluate portions of the project that would not necessarily fit into satisfying a LEED requirement compared to portions of projects that, that would. And as, as we go through that process, we'll have to capture either the actual or the projected costs. And along the way, we'll be monitoring what those costs are. And when we get to the point of determining that we're approaching 14% of, of the, of the difference, then that's when we would present something to the manager to make a decision about whether or not a waiver should be granted for that project.
I guess my concern is that we have a lot on our plate from a project standpoint, and I realize we'll be bidding these out, but we're, we're going to be slowing down our projects to just have additional line items and go back and check over these additional line items, and then whether or not it's going to cost another 15, 20% okay, and then it goes back to the city manager and he says yes, or he says no, or, this is a lot of additional steps.
Well, also, keep in mind, the purpose of this policy is to start the process with LEED in mind. So, um, we're not going to present a, a, a request without keeping that in mind upfront. So the accommodation of those elements will be built in to, to what the request is before we even, um, have funding to start the project. Still, the waiver part of that is, is available as we go through the process and monitor what the cost differential would be. Again, when we talked about this, uh, a couple of weeks ago at the agenda briefing, historically, um, data shows that the premium, the cost premium, it, it's, it's not near 14%, it's much less. So the waiver is there, it can be used if, if it does approach 14%, but the history, uh, around the costs that have been done for LEED projects all over the country show that it's, it's not, it's not very likely that we would, uh, approach 14%.
And is, is LEED, light bulbs and, and HVAC units and, I mean, what, can you break down what the actual?
Can, can I just interrupt here? Generally speaking, when we go to bid with a project, we will get a cost estimate for what that project is going to be. We will compare it against the budgeted item. I will tell you that 90% of the time, it exceeds the budgeted amount, and then we have to go back and we have to carve out and do what we love to call value engineering. Generally, what is, what is cut in the first round of value engineering is the LEED certification issues. But I, I appreciate and acknowledge that it could take some additional time, but given the fact that most of the time, we have to do an assessment of what the project is going to cost before we put it out to bid, and then identify those items in there. And those LEED items would be something that would be identified. And then when the bids come back in, the LEED items could be, uh, eliminated or continued on.
It, it, just to me, I, I get that. I, I think just to me, it seems like it's just an additional item of self-regulation on ourselves and, and continuation of, you know, adding other layers of burden on ourselves. If we, you know, want to have LEED things come in, but just to arbitrarily put a policy on ourselves that's going to cost more money, cost more staff time, ultimately taxpayers are going to pay for it, and it'll be some, something to the tune of five to 14% higher. Anything higher than that, the city manager could or could not, you know, authorize.
But if, if you'll recall David's, uh, presentation from two weeks ago, those costs are recouped over the course of a number of years.
Decades.
That's, that's the reason we said it would be city-owned facilities, city-occupied facilities, so that we would be able to have some control over that factor.
City-owned, city-occupied, but really, I mean, it's still the taxpayer at the end of the day that's having to, uh, lend out that money for us to recoup it over a, you know, a decade or so. So these are just my thoughts, there's a lot of people that want to speak, but thank you.
Mr. Spears?
Uh, yeah. So did I miss, or did I hear you say that going forward, whatever projects that we have in the pipeline now will not have to adhere to this? That if, once we pass this, whatever we have, like, in the pipeline now, we, we, so whatever renovations or whatever that takes place in Skyline won't have to adhere to this? Did, did you say that, Dave?
That's correct. Whatever's currently underway, funded right now, doesn't have to adhere, but the effective date?
Currently funded, ah, that's.
The effective, the effective date of this policy is?
Well, that's, that's what I needed to hear, because it's currently funded, and so if, if we change the, the standard, then the price would change.
Right.
But, well, go ahead, Dave, what were you going to say?
I'm, I'm just saying the, the renovations planned for Skyline, uh, would not, th, th, those renovations would not have to comply with this policy.
But it would be a good example of leadership going forward.
Certainly.
And, and that savings, those, I don't know which one of you said that, but those savings or the expenses and the savings would be recouped over time. So, I mean, it, it would be good to do it now, if we could, but I, I hear what you're saying, but I, I just needed clarity on that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Councilmember Andrews?
Um, I think the city manager answered my question, or answered the question about, um, you know, why this is a good use of taxpayer money, because we're, we're looking at the life cycle of a project and, and looking at it from the long-term and not just short-term savings. So I think that's important to remember.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay, what are the wishes of council with respect to the item? Item R2, we have a motion to approve, uh, council member Jordan, second by Mayor Pro Tim Barnett, discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Item passes six to one. Okay. That brings us to our next item, which is item R3, which is resolution authorizing upset bid process for 305, 315, and 319 Chestnut Street. At this time, I'd like to recognize the city manager, Mr. Cottle, Mr. Cottle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Aubrey Parsley, our economic development director, will overview this item for us.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. As the title indicates here, the city recently received a bid, uh, which included 305, 315, and 319 Chestnut Street. I'll, I'll dive straight into the, the bid parameters here. The amount of the bid was $1.7 million. The bidder was Cape Fear Holdings LLC. Uh, I know we've been talking here at the budget work session and some other meetings prior about bringing some brokers, uh, on-call for certain listings, but that does not apply to 305, 315, or 319 Chestnut at all. There are no commissions, listing agreements, or anything like that contemplated for this transaction. Uh, the, the bidder did have a special warranty deed condition attached, as well as a 365-day window to close, which I would point out is not atypical of projects like this in, in the private sector that contemplate a new use for a property. And then there in bold is one other provision that I wanted to, to point out, which is that this bid was submitted with a deed restriction, which would limit the principal use of the property to a retail grocery supermarket for a period of at least 10 years. And this provision here is, is an item that, that certainly sets it apart from other bids we've received in the past, and I think deserves a, a little discussion and a little background from the city's perspective, uh, in terms of the, the city's, um, documents and, and planning efforts and so forth, as it relates to a grocery store in our downtown. Uh, here on the slide, I included just a couple excerpts from our Vision 2020 Plan, which was adopted, uh, about this time, uh, in December in 2004. I, I figured 20 years was about far enough to, to go back and was sufficient to make the point. The point being that the city has been after this use for quite some time, and I'm sure the mayor and others will be able to speak to other efforts in the past to, to try and accomplish this, this goal here. You can see this Vision 2020 Plan called, uh, Downtown Incompletes Without Services Such As A Grocery Store, and cited insufficient market demand at the time as a reason why, uh, such a, an amenity did not exist in our, in our downtown. And then just fast-forwarding to something here, more recently, our current comprehensive plan speaks to this use a couple of times, uh, in, in a section titled What The Citizens Said, the need for a, a downtown grocery store was specifically identified, and there's even a, a map in the comp plan, that, in the discussion of trade centers, that shows a need for, uh, a, um, downtown grocery store development, just a couple blocks away from the one that the bidder has proposed here and, and that the council will be voting on tonight. And just one last slide on, on the, the background and the, um, the use contemplated by the, the bidder for this site. It's no secret that there is a, a food desert on our, our north side of, of, um, our north side community. Uh, just looking at one of the many tools available out there, the, the USDA Food Access Research Atlas will show you the food desert that exists there by census tract, and you can see on the star where 305 Chestnuts located, along with, uh, those, those, um, groups, uh, the area highlighted in orange shows where those food deserts are. And USDA measures them, um, for an urban area as being a half-mile or a mile away, and you'll see that, uh, the, the areas around 305 Chestnut Street basically qualify by, by any urban definition for what a food desert is. Uh, so that's just some backdrop that I thought was relevant for, for this bid that I, I wanted to bring up for council. Uh, a couple other, uh, points I'd like to make about these properties, they are zoned CBD, uh, there is 1.65 acres of land in all across all three parcels. The city acquired this, this land, uh, back in 1997 and has used it as office space all the way up until the early part of this year, when we took folks out and, and consolidated many of our operations in Skyline Center. Uh, as we, we all know, just from having driven here to Thaliaan tonight, the, um, structures at 305 are, are actively being demolished. Council voted to award that contract, uh, this, this September here, not, just a few months ago. And there was a couple reasons for doing that, that was, that staff brought up. Uh, one was that the expected capex in the building was significant. Uh, we had Dave Mazes' group produce a study not too long ago that showed that there was a $4.2 million need in capex for these structures over just the next three years. And then also, we just thought that, um, from a resale perspective, that solving the problems, uh, that a property might have to make it more appealing to the market was generally a good idea. So those factors combined, um, in, in staff's view, made a potentially compelling argument for the, the demolition, which council saw fit to award that contract here recently. Uh, just a couple notes that I always go over when we receive a, a bid that's going to go through the upset bid process. Uh, when we receive a bid, it has to go to council for a vote, which, which is the vote we're having tonight. Uh, if council approves it, the, uh, staff will publish a notice, I'll go over that timeline here shortly. Uh, we publish a notice in the newspaper and on our website, and, uh, there'll be a 10-day window from when that, uh, notice is made for any interested parties to come forward with an upset bid. If no bid is received, uh, no further council action is required, we can move under contract. However, if an upset bid is received, the process continues to play out until there is no longer a bid received. You've heard me call that a, effectively a slow-motion live auction in the past, that's, that's the way I, I think about it. Um, just going into timeline of what this would look like, council would vote tonight. If, um, council authorizes the upset bid process, I'd place the order for a legal notice to appear in the paper, um, that usually there's a, a three-business-day or so lead times, so December 9th would be the date that we would, uh, be very likely to schedule the, the notice for print and then have upset bids due on the 19th. So we'll know by December 19th whether or not an upset bid has been received or not, and if it has, again, the process would, would play out. Um, again, to put an, another notice out, another request for bids, and if we do get an upset bid, there would be a subsequent council vote. To be eligible, an upset bid has to use the, the form that, uh, we will publish online. Uh, it'll also be available in print at the Skyline Center, 929 North Front Street. There is a statutory prescribed minimum by which a bid must come in, the increase of the bid must be. Uh, it's 10% of the first thousand, so $100, plus 5% of the remainder of the purchase price. Uh, the, a 5% deposit has to accompany that bid. The, a 5% deposit has to accompany that bid and it must be delivered to the clerk. All that information will be in the public notice. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Okay. Yes, yes, sir. We have, uh, Mayor Protem?
Just two quick questions. One, has the bidder bid built stores before?
So what I can tell you is, yes, the, the past history of, of what the, the bidders have, have built in the past. And they have built a grocery store supermarket at Pine Valley. The Publix there, which has already been publicized in, in the papers, as well as a, a Publix down in Carolina Beach. And I believe they've built a couple other supermarkets in, in North Carolina. The locations and, and brands escape me at the moment, though.
Okay. Then my second question is I got a phone call from somebody with the, the Food Corp, you know, on the north side. What, what would you say to them? And, and I'm not against this project, but what would you say to them about their project? How would this affect it, not affect it? You got any ideas?
I think I'd say it's, it's nice to have options. I, I don't know how this, this project might affect that project, but it's, there's nothing wrong with, with having more than, than one option. I don't know that the two would, would necessarily compete, but we're, we're certainly open to establishing a line of communication with, with the folks that are working on that project to determine what's maybe redundant or, or, or any other factors to consider as they, county and, and the endowment and the Northside Food Co-op continue to progress that project and the city works through, through this process here should, should council authorize it tonight.
I would, I would hope that you do that, you know, suggest that that be done. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, to, to your point, and, and I was, you know, I was anticipating that, you know, with the food co-op going up there on Fanning Street. And I asked Christina Haley with Wilmington Downtown that does a lot of evaluations to determine, are there food co-ops in other communities that are close to grocery stores and how do they interact and what have you? And what she shared with me was that there is a public supermarket on Peace Street. This is in Raleigh. And then seven blocks away, there is a Weaver Street Co-op. And then in Glenwood South Pharmacy and in, and in Market in the downtown area. In addition, there's also a Fresh Market and a Harris Teeter, which has an attached parking garage with an express lane, which is about a mile away. And then in Asheville, just outside of downtown Asheville, there's a Harris Teeter, Whole Foods, and Trader Joe's. More central to the downtown area is the French Broad Food Co-op. So they do coexist. So there are, there are, there are, there are other ones that are, that are out there that, in Raleigh and in Asheville. There's more here. There's one in Charlotte also, but I'm, I'm gonna defer to Mr. Spears right now. Ms. Spears?
Sticking to the lines that you and Mayor Protem are, are discussing currently, I would hope that this, if, if this was to be a, a grocery store, that the design and innovation that would go in to the food co-op would, would be heightened. But I, I think this, I'll just be transparent here. In my many years of having a discussion about grocery stores and what was gonna take place downtown, anybody who's a native in Wilmington, North Carolina, and who's lived on the north side knows that there needed to be a grocery store for downtown, for, for there to be a grocery store on the north side. So you're gonna appease two different demographics. And so you're gonna get a higher-end grocery store for people who live downtown and in this area. And then you get a, a, a lesser version over for the food co-op. But here's an opportunity for all people that are involved, again, to step it up. You, you want something that's gonna be really cool and really effective on the north side if you get something that's gonna be a Publix or, or whatever to take place downtown. And, and so there's no other way to say it. The people on the north side don't wanna be slighted.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Councilmember Rangers, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I lived in Carboro before moving to Wilmington and where the original Weaver Street Market was located, on Weaver Street in Carboro. And there was a Harris Teeter not two blocks away that, you know, that Weaver Street did so well that it moved out into Hillsborough and Raleigh and I'm sure a few more locations by now. So, no, I think, I think it complements each other. There was just an article that my husband read me this morning that was in The Atlantic a few days ago talking about the grocery stores moving out of neighborhoods is what caused the food deserts, not grocery stores moving in. And that they actually improved the whole economy of the area. So I think it's a good idea.
Good. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you. What is the wishes of council in respect to our item R3? We have a motion to approve by councilmember Ryan Barck, second by councilmember Andrews. Discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes seven to nothing. Congratulations. Next item business, which is item R4, which is resolution authorizing a fund balance cap for the one cent for affordable housing. This time I'd like to recognize the city manager, Mr. Cottle. Mr. Cottle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rachel Schuler, our Housing and Neighborhood Services Director, will overview this item.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council. For your consideration since evening is a resolution establishing a fund balance cap policy for the one cent for affordable and workforce housing. In fiscal year 23, city council established a policy to dedicate the value of one cent on the ad verum property tax rate for affordable housing. Since established, city investments of $23 million in local and federal funds have leveraged over $93 million in other funding. Carrying over these funds has allowed the funding to accumulate, supporting changing market conditions and attracting larger projects. Showed here are examples of projects that have received local and federal funding over the past few years and the number of units produced. Staff presented a recommendation establishing a fund balance cap policy set at 2.5 times the value of the annual allocation for affordable housing at your November budget work session. By establishing a cap on these carryover funds, available funds would be available to support other one-time community needs. This policy supports the city's 2025 to 2030 strategic plan by funding programs and leveraging private investments for workforce and affordable housing. To ensure consistent calculation of the fund balance cap, the calculation of the affordable housing fund balance cap will coincide with the city council's annual resolution accepting the annual comprehensive financial report, which occurs generally in the month of January. Staff is recommending approval of this resolution. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Waddell?
Ms. Schuler, I promise I'm not always picking on you, okay? I just think a lot about this and how we dedicate this one cent and, and whether or not it's, it's the best way. And I think a lot of the discussion that we've had, to your credit, you've taken back to your, to your department and, and come up with something that's a, you know, a, a good, a good policy recommendation. I wonder if there's been any consideration or contemplation about maybe a policy that says when you hit X number, call it two and a half. Because that's, one and a half is the CDPG, right? But you, you said that there's some discussion about that increasing.
CD, yeah, currently Community Development Block Grant has a 1.5 times, timeliness, they call it. And they're looking to get away with that to be able to fund larger, long-term projects, really focusing on some economic development and community development projects. And so they're starting, the federal government has been recognizing that it takes time to get to those projects. As you see with some of the projects that come before you, they take over a year just to get from concept to completion, so, for an application. So that's why they're, they're looking to shift that.
What do you think about doing a, a policy? And, and I, I realize I'm shooting from the hip, but the first time I heard it was, you know, we, we talked about this in our, in our budget workshop, didn't think much about it. Now it's up here, about a, and, and so I'm legislating a little bit from the dais, which I don't, you know, sorry. But about a policy that said, once you hit that cap, that, that basically we return that one cent in the next fiscal year to the taxpayers. So that one cent goes away. And then you, you know, basically you buy it down and then it comes back. If a great project comes up in the interim, you fund it out of fund balance. Basically, just kinda keeping ourselves honest up here, keeping you and your department, now that you need it, you know, honest and, and pursuing projects. I realize that may, you know, I see the city manager grasping at the microphone quickly. So that may, you know, cause some consternation in the, in the finance department. But I, and, and I am admittedly shooting from the hip a little bit here. But I just think there's a, there's, there's ways that we can, I mean, you're already thinking outside of the box on this and, and ways that we can do it to show the taxpayer that we're not just saying, hey, if, if we can't get to a certain amount on a project, we're scooping that money and we're taking it elsewhere, right?
This, this particular policy was modeled after the idea of what happens with your general fund, fund balance. If it goes beyond a certain amount and then you can put it into retirement of debt or whatever. Excuse me. And so this policy was modeled after that. It's certainly not the begin-all and end-all, but we think it's a really good solution. The one thing I would say is, oddly enough, that the issue of taking away a penny is that it's very difficult to put that penny back afterwards. I think once you, you start using that money for something else, then it, it's very difficult. So it's more of a, of a, if you will, a political question than it is, than it is any sort of administrative question. And I'd certainly say that's up to council. But this was in, a, a way in which you could leave the, the mechanism in place, but then assure that any amount over and above would go to some other cause. So there are certainly many ways to do this.
Is there a discussion about, so then it just goes back into, into general fund, right? Undesignated fund balance. Does it just carry into the fund balance? Or are we utilizing that money? Basically, is the taxpayer seeing a return on that money in a, you know, immediately?
The, the fund balance, as you know, goes to a certain cap. And then beyond that, it is, as I mentioned earlier, available to retired debt or whatever the case may be. So this would just add to that kitty, if you will, for money that would be available. You certainly could designate with this resolution that it would go towards debt retirement or it could go towards one-time capital expenditures.
But that's, that's something we could work, sorry to interrupt. That's something we could work out during the budget cycle.
That would, that, I would, I would advocate we leave the flexibility for council.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. What are the wishes of council in respect to the resolution? We have a motion to approve by councilmember Spears, second by Mayor Protem Barnett. Discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. That brings us to our next item business, which is reports. Item RP1, Report of Council's Naming Facilities Committee. Mayor Protem Barnett, who's the chairman of that committee, will be, be giving us a report.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The naming committee met on November 18th. Members present was myself and councilmember Sellette Andrews. Councilmember Robin Barck was excused. We do support the bridge being named after Mr. Cornice E. Nixon. But for our report, I'd like to report that we have a request to name the MLK Gym in honor of Ronald Ron Davis. The gym is located at 401 South 8th Street. The applicant was Atiba Johnson, the Oops Foundation. The honoree, of course, as I mentioned, is Ronald Ron Davis. The designation is to name the gym, the Ronald Davis Gymnasium. The application was submitted on 10/13/2004. Fee was paid and we recommended unanimously to approve the naming of gym number one to the Ronald Davis Gymnasium. I offer that as a motion.
We have a motion to approve. Yes, Madam Clerk?
Did you read the other one?
No, I think, do I do it the second time? I'm reading both together?
You wanna do them together or do you wanna do them separate?
The report comes as one report, so if you put the report out, you can take one vote.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, then, then-
I'd like to then add to that, that we have a request to name one of the MLK gyms in honor of William E. Murphy III. The gym is located 401 South 8th Street. Portia Daniels Murphy was the applicant. The honoree is William E. Murphy III. The William E. Murphy III Gymnasium is the designation. We met, the, the committee, the application was submitted on 11/13/2024. Fees were paid and we recommend unanimously for the approval. Therefore, I offer that motion.
We have two, two there. So we have a motion to approve by Mayor Protem Barnett, second by councilmember Spears. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. That concludes this regular agenda. Madam Attorney?
Yes, sir. We do have a closed session motion for you at the appropriate time.
Very good. City Manager? Madam Clerk?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. You accepted the report of the naming committee, but you also have the two resolutions that are still there, as R1A and R1B.
I thought we could take them both at one time and just make them one vote. That's what I anticipated.
Whatever the city attorney thinks.
Is the city attorney okay with that or do we have to go back through each one of these?
Yes, sir. I think you, I think you put the report out there for both of them, so I, I think you're good.
We're okay with that. Okay. Very good. Okay. Ms. Turner?
Just wanted to congratulate Jason Smith on his swearing-in last night and then his ceremonial swearing-in this morning as our new district attorney. Jason and I, up until now, have shared a wall in the office. He's gonna move to a bigger office this week, but have enjoyed working with him and know that he'll be a fantastic district attorney and wish him all the best. And Merry Christmas, since we won't see each other again till the New Year in this setting.
Very good. Mr. Waddell? Mayor Protem?
I do wanna congratulate all of those who were elected and are now serving. Especially, I wanna do a shout-out to former Commissioner now Jonathan Barfield. I wanna thank him for his number of years of service and modeling, being a good public servant. Lastly, I do wanna wish everybody a safe Christmas, love your people around you, and a Happy New Year early.
Thank you. Mr. Robin Barck?
Yes, if you like to go look at Christmas lights, you need to go out in the Tyndall neighborhood. It is off the chart, really pretty. Sometimes it gets kinda tacky. Those folks out there, they, they do a lot of thought and I'm sure their electric bill is gonna go through the roof. And the other thing is our lights. I just amazed at how pretty they are. And, you know, hopefully, one day in the near future, we can extend those lights all the way out to the skyline and, and do some, some lights in addition to what we already have on Third Street and the trees and stuff. It's just, it's, it makes a real statement about our city when people come to see it. You don't forget that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rangers?
Yes, I just wanted to mention that in this cold weather, that the warming shelter is open at 401 Grace Street this week and that they are looking for men's jackets, especially size medium and large. If you could drop those off and, and just let anybody know that's out there on the street that there's a place that they can go.
Councilmember Spears?
Yes, sir. A couple different things. I hope you all see this very fine scarf that I have on. It is a John Thomas Hargit High School scarf. I am a graduate of John Thomas Hargit High School, 1994 National School of Excellence. How you doing, Mr. Johnson? But I got this scarf from newly-elected, sworn-in county commissioner Stephanie Walker. I believe she went to Hanover. And so I think when she put it on, it probably burnt her neck. So she got this for me and saved it and said, Kevin, here, you have this. I can't wear it. So thank you, Stephanie. Congratulations. Also wanna say congratulations to the Davis family and, and the Murphy family, affectionately known to me as Coach Ron and Coach Murphy. Played in, in MLK for many years. You've heard me talk about that for, for many years. And it is a great salute to, to great men, great pillars of this community for both gymnasiums to be, to be named after them. Just, just a great honor and, and how great that expansion is coming along. It looks, it looks really good and, and we're so proud. I don't know, I may lace, lace up and play in there when it's done. I don't know, I may lace up and play in there when it's done. And I just want to say that there has been a lot of things going on in this community, and I'm hoping that people will use this time to come together, talk to your loved ones, older, younger, especially the young. Pour into the young people about the value of lives and the decisions that they make as it relates to their lives, because this is really a great community. I am so blessed to be a native, a member of this community, and even more blessed, and I wanted this to be my last thing to say, just to say thank you for the people who voted for me to sit in this seat five years ago, and again, a year ago, to do what we do here, to make this community better for everyone. So thank you to the city of Wilmington.
Thank you. Real quick, before we go into closed session, I just want to shout out that we will, the Metro mayors will be having their winter meeting here starting tomorrow through Friday, and we have mayors from all over the state of North Carolina that will be attending. And we have several mayors from the western part of the state, including the mayor of Asheville, that will be talking to us about their relief efforts in that part of the state, and of course, a lot of other things that we'll be discussing that pertain and impact cities. I know some of those sessions will be there at 929 at the Skyline Center, and I know Kara Spencer and Bo Mills and the crew from the League have done a phenomenal job in putting this together, so we want to thank them for all their hard work in making this happen. So with that, I'm going to ask for a motion to close the closed session, to enter to a closed session pursuant to the provisions of North Carolina General Statute Section 143-318.11A and 6, in order for the city council to consider the qualifications, character, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee. And we will be doing that closed session right here in this room, so we have a motion to approve by Mr. Waddell, second by Councilmember Ravenbar. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. We will now be going into closed session. We will ask for the general public and everybody else that is not supposed to be in here to please vacate the room. Thank you. We'll take other.
And congratulations to the Hargit Viking football team.
100%. Go Vikes.